Good evening, everybody. It is Thursday, April 13th, and we are here at the Montgomery County Council. This is a public hearing on the FY24 capital budget, amendments to the FY23 to 28 capital improvements program, and the FY24 operating budget. The council and our committees will conduct work sessions on this budget beginning tomorrow, Friday, April 14th, and the full council will begin work sessions beginning May 8th. That is all to tell you that this process is just beginning. We have many weeks of deliberation and conversation, but tonight's public hearing is the fourth of four public hearings that we are conducting here at the council. And when it is over tonight, at whatever time it ends, we will have heard from more than 150 residents about what is important to you so that we can take all of that into account as we work on this FY24 budget. And with that, we have 53 speakers this evening. So, democracy in action. So I'm going to begin and ask the first six individuals if they can come on down. Pia Morrison, Mitchell Tropin, Dr. Christine Handy, Jennifer Martin, Gino Wren, and Jeff Buttle. You have three minutes.
President Glass and the Montgomery County Council members, my name is Pia Morrison, and I'm the proud president of SEIU Local 500. Our union is over 20,000 strong, serving the residents of this county from cradle to career. Our members play vital roles at Montgomery County Public Schools, from the building service workers that provide a safe and clean learning environment, to the paraeducators ensuring our children with special needs receive an equal education, and even the bus operators that return them home safely each day, and many more dedicated support staff professionals at MCPS. SEIU Local 500 members' vocations are centered around creating a quality learning environment for all children in this county. Our county has weathered budget shortfalls and a global health crisis. Many times, the sacrifices necessary to meet these challenges have been put on the backs of public workers. This is the year that must stop. Economic recovery means returning our funding levels to where they were before these crises. Under the current budget request by County Executive Elrich, a proposed revenue enhancement measure through an increase in property taxes is necessary to fully fund our schools. SEIU Local 500 enthusiastically support this measure to ensure that all public services in this county are fully funded, and the quality of our children's education is not once again asked to bear the brunt of budget shortfalls. The consequences of not fully funding our schools are felt far beyond these chambers. Recruiting and retaining talented educators and support professionals will be casualties of failing to act. Stability and quality learning environments for students will be casualties of failing to act. The well-being of our most vulnerable children will be casualties if you all fail to act. We strongly urge you to pass the necessary revenue enhancement measures to ensure the full funding of Montgomery County Public Schools. Thank you for the time to address the council today and for considering my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Mr. Tropin? One more time? There you go.
Okay. Good evening, council chair, council members. My name is Mitchell Tropin. I am vice president for Higher Education at SEIU Local 500. We represent part-time faculty at Montgomery College, where I also teach. I urge the council to fully fund the college's proposed budget for the next fiscal year. The college's vision and performance has made it worthy of full funding, and I also urge the council to reject a proposed $2.9 million reduction in the college's capital budget. But before I go further, I want to mention something that burns my toast. People are always getting the name of my college wrong. They keep calling it Montgomery Community College. That's not right. Besides, there's a big school in Philadelphia that has that name. Now, I object to calling MC a community college because the name does not do it justice. We have gone far beyond the parameters of what most community colleges do. If anything, our name should be Montgomery Communities College. MC has done an amazing job of serving not only traditional academic communities, but non-traditional ones. We strive to meet the needs of our students by providing programs aiming at helping numerous student communities, including LGBTQ students, students of color, students from foreign nations, students who are dealing with mental health issues, and students with food security issues, among others. We have expanded the college's role by serving a new community of students, high school students who are participating in our early enrollment programs. They're earning college credits while earning their high school diploma. And we are always seeking ways to help county residents, as evidenced by plans to establish a center in East County with a possible fourth campus. Our workforce development programs are helping county residents compete for better-paying jobs. Internally, we've just completed a training program where we are identifying Latino youth who work at MC, seeing if they're good candidates to pursue IT careers so they can get better jobs with good wages. And everybody at MC is included in our fight for racial justice, an effort led by the college's Truth, Racial Healing, and Transformation Center. But MC is always expanding what a two-year college can do. MC, in fact, just began last month working with Montgomery County Police Cadets in a new program of community-informed education and training. Cadets are shown how to be better prepared to tackle a variety of real-world policing challenges, even how to listen better. What other college does that? In conclusion, a rose is a rose, and Montgomery College, by any name, is a tremendous institution. But paraphrasing Senator Edward Kennedy, "With a fully funded budget, the work goes on. Good causes endure. Students hope live, and so their dreams never die." And that is good for all Montgomery County. Thank you.
Good Ted Kennedy line, that is true. Dr. Christine Handy.
Good evening, President Glass and Vice President Friesen, and members of the county council. I am Christine Handy, president of the Montgomery County Association of Administrators and Principals and Montgomery County Business and Operations Administrators. Our organization represents over 850 educational leaders in MCPS, serving in administrative and supervisory positions in schools and central offices. I want to express my sincere appreciation to the county executive for the allocated funds in the budget for our public schools. As we all know, public schools are the foundation of strong communities, and MCPS is known to successfully prepare our future workforce, taxpayers, citizens, and leaders, offering many a path out of poverty. Schools provide social, emotional, mental health, and physical health services, making vital connections for families to other county resources. Specifically, MCPS has become not just a hub of learning, but a necessary anchor for families in the county. I proudly live and work in Montgomery County. In 2006, I had just been recognized as the State of Maryland's Principal of the Year and relocated to this county the next year to serve the Gathersburg High School community. I do not share this accolade with you to brag, but only to show that historically, MCPS has been able to recruit and retain high-performing educators. The reputation of this county and our schools has always attracted top education majors at universities across Maryland and along the East Coast. We are a top-performing school district, and our salaries used to be more than competitive with our neighbors in the DMV. However, salaries in Montgomery County are not as competitive today. 10 years ago, our administrative pay was third in the state. Today, we are sad to report that we have fallen to not number four or five, but number eight. You heard me. We are number eight as it relates to administrative salaries. Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Frederick, Howard County, Prince George's, St. Mary's, and Washington County all pay their most veteran leaders more than MCPS. Because the education field has become highly competitive and work demands have increased, the pool of candidates is diminishing. Educators are looking for better work-life balance and competitive salaries. Therefore, it is imperative that we invest in our school system to attract, retain, and recruit the best employees to serve our children. As a principal, I often met with realtors and home buyers to talk about our cluster of schools, and trust me, it is the quality of our schools that impact home sales and home values. So there must be an investment in our schools. Over the next few months, you're going to hear from the Montgomery County community. You will hear from many that encourage you to support the county executive's budget, along with his proposed 10-cent tax increase, and you're going to hear from those who vehemently oppose it. As our elected leaders, we depend on you to make good decisions for the children and families who live here. Leaders are often faced with the responsibility to make tough decisions. Trust me, I know that. And when it comes to our future, the children, we hope that you do what is right and invest in our schools. Please note, we are your partners in this community, and together, we work for the good of Montgomery County. Thank you so much for your continued support and commitment to education in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Handy. Thank you. Next, Ms. Martin.
All right, you made me come after Christine. Good evening, council members, and thank you for this opportunity to address you this evening on behalf of the Montgomery County Education Association, where I serve as president. Our membership is over 14,000 strong, and many are here tonight to show you that there is a real need. I am here tonight to speak in support of the county executive's proposed budget. Residents of Montgomery County, and I am a lifelong resident myself and taxpayer, we expect and deserve excellent public services. In particular, we know the importance of our schools to the health and prosperity of our communities. We recognize that public schools are also truly important to a well-functioning democracy. MCA calls on you to approve a 10-cent education-only tax increase to address longstanding problems of underinvestment in our children. Per pupil spending by the county in inflation-adjusted dollars is still below what we were spending on each student in 2010. Meanwhile, we've become a student body that is majority students of color, and we've had greater demand for English language learning and special education services throughout that time. So as the needs have grown and as equity issues increase, we are spending less. And also, the number of children living in poverty here in this county has grown. All of these issues come into our schools, and we struggle to meet these challenges without the necessary resources. Highly qualified and experienced teachers have been leaving at an unprecedented rate. Really, hardly a day goes by that I don't talk to someone else who's leaving. And I'm not talking after 25 or 35 years, I'm talking after five years, 15 years. We're losing talent. People are leaving, and they're not just leaving education here, they're leaving the profession. It's a travesty, and it is a crisis. Folks are retiring early or simply leaving the profession for less demanding, better-paying, or more respected work. Last year, more than 11,000, oh gosh, let's hope not, more than 1,100 teachers and other education professionals like counselors and school psychologists left MCPS. As of March 29th, there are still 562 unfilled educator positions for this year. Today, teachers in Montgomery County are earning 15% to 17% less in real dollars than they were 20 years ago. Meanwhile, the cost of college has more than doubled. Educators are expected to earn not only a bachelor's, but also a master's degree, adding to the financial burdens to pursuing teaching as a profession. As a result, schools of education are seeing a drastic loss of students choosing education as a major. Where are the next teachers coming from, and what are we doing to attract them? The superintendent and Board of Education has stated that they intend to use the increased funding to attract, support, and retain highly effective teachers and other frontline education workers. We know that the greatest difference outside the home in driving student achievement is having an excellent teacher in every classroom. We must uphold the reputation of MCPS as a world-class school system, one that attracts businesses and families, supports our economic growth, and strengthens the fabric of our communities. The educators of Montgomery County proudly join with our union partners at McGeo, SEIU Local 500, the IAFF Local 400, the FOP, and McBoa in urging the county council to approve this budget and the education-only 10-cent tax increase. By investing in our schools and other critical public services, we will ensure that Montgomery County continues to be a great place to learn, work, live, and prosper.
Mr. Wren.
Yes, President Glass, Vice President Friesen, council members. Good evening. Since the Great Recession, local 1994 members have experienced a significant loss in wages. Wage freezes has cost them thousands in salary and retirement benefits. To make matters worse, most departments are chronically understaffed. This staffing crisis is threatening Montgomery County's quality of life and eroding the faith in public services. We're in the most highly competitive market for public employees. We compete with all the DMV jurisdictions, the federal government, and up-and-coming competitors such as Frederick, Washington, and Loudoun Counties, all offering excellent salaries, competitive benefits, more manageable workloads, and in some areas, a lower cost of living. Currently, we have 960 vacant frontline positions across all services, the most acute being in public safety and HHS. The sheriff's office has become an extension of the police department, running calls and working side-by-side with officers combating the growing crime rate in the county. Has 22 vacancies, a 14.5% vacancy rate. ECC, Emergency Communications, where public safety begins with that 911 call, has 69 vacant positions. A 35% vacancy rate, think about that. Calls are literally being put on hold each and every day. The Department of Corrections and Rehab is down 400 officers, a 16% vacancy rate. All three of these vital public safety departments are working under mandatory overtime scenarios. Employees are being forced to work double shifts, 24/7, every single day, leading to the tremendous burnout and significantly contributing to the attrition rate. The consequences of this high vacancy rate and exhaustion compromise the safety of our entire community. The crisis center is down 29 therapists, a 25% vacancy rate. This makes fully staffing our mobile crisis response teams a complete fantasy. It's not going to happen. School health needs 63 more career nurses and 38 school health technicians, or a 27% vacancy rate, critically impairing those members' ability to manage the health needs of our student population. Child welfare services needs to fill 35 vacant social worker positions. Adult Protective Services is down five social workers. These vacancies are threatening the health and safety of some of our most vulnerable residents, our elderly and our children. We also have significant vacancies in the rec. department, library department. These vacancies inhibit our members' ability to provide the programs necessary to support the residents. We're at a perilous crossroads, and unless this council accepts this reality and works with the unions to transition Montgomery County back to being a preferred employer, county employees in the community will continue to pay the price. We negotiate with the county executive collective bargaining agreement that acknowledges these realities and does something to address this crisis. The budget also includes a 10-cent property tax increase to help address the deep needs of our county. We are asking that the council fully fund all labor agreements and take action to enhance the county's revenues. Let's get to a point where the county has the financial resources necessary to serve the community at the level that they deserve and expect. These years of disinvesting in the workplace has come back to haunt us. Lack of ability to compete and recruit is severely eroding the quality of all public services in our county. We must take immediate action to turn this around. Our members and the residents deserve nothing less.
Thank you, Mr. Wren. Last speaker on this panel, Mr. Buttle.
Good evening, Council President Glass and members of the Montgomery County Council. My name is Jeff Buttle. I am the president of the Montgomery County Career Firefighters Association, a local affiliate of the International Association of Firefighters. Our organization represents approximately 1,200 career firefighters and paramedics employed by the Montgomery County Fire and Rescue Service. I am here this evening to testify in support of the FY24 recommended operating budget. More specifically, it's critically important to approve and fund the provisions that were negotiated in our collective bargaining agreement for fiscal year 24. The Fire and Rescue Service is at a critical crossroad and is currently experiencing significant challenges with the recruitment and retention of our career firefighters. The provisions bargained with the county executive and now before the county council were specifically designed to address some of the issues, including more competitive starting pay and adjustments to pensions to encourage long-term retention of our members. I think this is true of all of the members that all of my colleagues on this panel represent, but it's certainly true of the fire service. It's important to remember that the employees are the most essential component to the services the county government provides. Without an adequate workforce, the quality of services are greatly diminished. We look forward to having a seat at the table during upcoming committee work sessions to discuss these issues in more detail and work together to solve the many challenges that we are currently facing together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Buttle, and thank you to each of you and your members who are all here this evening for the work you do on the betterment of Montgomery County residents. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to call the next panel up. Melissa Rubin, Aaron Droller, Michael Rubin, Cara Grant, Maria Hilda Rosello, and Sally Murick. You can sit anywhere. Michael, might you be able to move over one seat so we can accommodate the translation? Thank you. Sally, you're fine. You're fine. You're good, as always. Okay. Okay, Ms. Rubin. You're first. Yes.
Hello. Melissa was unable to be here tonight, so my name is Dr. Roxanne Borak, and I am a veterinarian. I live in Montgomery County, and I am representing the Animal Services and Advisory Committee. It's a little bit of a change of topic. I feel like I should have brought a kitten or something. My focus in my career has been to work with shelters, rescues, and low-cost veterinary service providers. These places reach out to and serve the underrepresented public, who would otherwise never bring their pets to see a veterinarian in the first place. Currently, I'm driving over one hour one way to Prince George's, to Washington DC, and sometimes to Howard County, but this is not for lack of need in Montgomery County. We do need these services here, however, we do not have the providers here. So I would love to serve the people in my own county, but at this time, in Montgomery County, there are no public options for spay-neuter services. Despite there being many communities in need of these services, and despite there being county codes saying that this needs to be provided, citing Chapter 5-403, the shelter that was built in 2014 is doing their best just to keep up the animals that are brought into them, and they don't have the bandwidth or space to do spay or neuter on public animals, which is why I'm here today to ask for support of the low-cost spay-neuter initiative that is in the budget. Having a public spay-neuter option would go a long way in preventing even more animals from ending up at the shelter. Male animals left intact tend to roam, looking for a little love, and they often get hit by cars or lost, and then they end up in that already overcrowded place. Females can give birth to litters of four to 10 kittens or puppies at a time. Additionally, left intact, they can suffer from deadly uterine infections or mammary cancers. Providing quality, low-cost services to the community would help those pets with their families, or stay with their families, while doing a huge service to the public at large, because at the time of altar, animals are vaccinated against a variety of diseases, but most importantly, rabies. We also deworm and deflee them. Multiple different rescue groups with decades of experience combined, myself with 14 years of experience in this field, and Tom Koenig of the Office of Animal Services have come together with a plan. We're going to close that gap in services that currently exist between the shelter and the public. The group has applied for a 501(c)(3) and is on the waitlist for a mobile surgery unit. This is a huge opportunity. For a nominal fee of $1 per month, we can rent this van that includes an operating area and kennels for holding our patients. But we need your help. We need help with funding for supplies and to pay our staff. This project is ready to get up and running. I'm ready to get to work in Montgomery County and to start reaching out to people who need our help and to aid in the pet care inequities some Montgomery County residents are experiencing. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Dr.. Mr. Droller.
Good evening, Council, sorry. Good evening, Council President Glass and members of the Montgomery County Council. My name is Aaron Droller, and I'm a resident of Silver Spring. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony on the county executive's proposed fiscal year 2024 budget. I testify today in opposition to the county executive's proposed property tax increase. A property tax increase of this magnitude is regressive and disproportionately harmful to middle- and working-class residents that already struggle to afford housing in this county. This proposal is on top of sky-high property tax reassessments, rising mortgage interest rates, and punishing inflation. I know affordable housing is very important to this council, and this tax increase will make living in Montgomery County further out of reach for homeowners and renters alike. While this property tax increase is being sold to the public as money for our educators, it's clear from the budget being presented that this is mere pretext for irresponsible growth of county government across the board. We all want our educators to be compensated fairly and competitively, but it's clear that this new revenue would be used to fund other MCPS initiatives and not just teacher compensation. While there might be many worthy programs, the public should not be asked to pay additional taxes at this challenging time to fund any additional administrative bloat at MCPS or in the county government. I would add that special-needs children were treated atrociously during the pandemic, and I simply don't trust or believe that MCPS will prioritize special-needs educator compensation. The county executive has put forward to this council a fiscally irresponsible budget. You all have a tough task ahead of you. I won't rehash what you already all know, but using one-time funds for ongoing expenses and creating structural deficits is a recipe for fiscal disaster. The growth in county government spending is simply not commensurate with our anemic population and economic growth. Given the macroeconomic realities we face here, and with a projected recession on the horizon, the county government needs to tighten its belt, just like residents have to. The council can start by zeroing out all COVID-era programs that were federally funded. Those programs, created under the unique conditions created by the pandemic, were never intended to be backfilled by local dollars and made permanent. Further, given that there are already huge numbers of vacancies within the executive, the council should authorize no further growth in positions and eliminate vacancies that have gone unfilled for more than three years. The council needs to right-size this government this year, or the decisions that you will be required to make in the future will be much, much more painful. Please reject this regressive property tax increase. Thank you for your time and for your service to Montgomery County.
Thank you, Mr. Droller. Next, Mr. Rubin. Next, Mr. Rubin.
Members of the Montgomery County Council, council staff and fellow residents, good evening. My name is Michael Rubin, and I'm privileged to serve as interim executive director at Impact Silver Spring. I've spent most of my life as a resident of this county and have to tell you how frustrated I am at the minimal progress we have made during my lifetime in lifting people out of poverty and reducing our racial wealth gap. When I listen to our residents, I hear the need for greater income by many of our most disadvantaged community members. COVID made it worse. We need greater investment in community economic development. Now, trying to figure out how our county supports these efforts is a bit challenging to find in the FY24 Proposed Operating Budget, as it was in prior years. The working families' income supplement of $27.5 million is a big reduction from last year's $45.1 million. I know there's some cost shifting with state and federal, but even so, that scares me. We also fund WorkSource Montgomery, the Montgomery County Economic Development Corporation, the Economic Development Fund, and a business center team in the Office of the Executive. Much of that funding is used to attract companies who need a highly-trained and specialized workforce. Even so, our total economic development investments of maybe just north of $40 million pale in comparison to the DHHS and MCPD budgets. What are we doing to support increasing the incomes of our most vulnerable residents? It seems that much of that is being outsourced to nonprofits. Hard to tell with the community grants program shifting to multiple grant programs in the Office of Grants Management, which is good, but in all likelihood, less than $1 million will be spent on nonprofits who are innovating new responses to these issues. At Impact, we've expanded our support for cooperatives and started a trade academy to teach entrepreneurship, business computing, cooking, and sewing, to name a few. But honestly, these efforts need to be dramatically expanded if we are to lift people out of poverty. We, as a county, do a good job at providing safety net services for our most vulnerable, but we will never safety net our way out of poverty. We will never safety net our way out of the racial wealth gap. I understand you have difficult decisions in front of you. I and many of my neighbors here tonight are not supportive of a large property tax increase, and I get that there are many worthy and necessary programs in this $6.8 billion proposed budget. But please remember to fund programs and initiatives that can help lift people out of poverty and reduce the demand on our safety net services. We know that maintaining the status quo where so many of our neighbors have inadequate income leads to increased demand for social services, higher levels of property crime, poor educational outcomes, increased homelessness, and worse health outcomes. We need to do better. I implore the council to find additional funds to deal with what I view as the root cause of many of these issues: income insecurity. Every dollar invested in these efforts will have a multiplier effect by increasing our tax base and reducing demand for county services. A growing government with more funds spent on safety net services is not sustainable. Let's work together to help our most vulnerable residents, grow our tax base, and actually shrink government. I don't believe that this is a pipe dream. It's why I go to work every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Ms. Grant.
Hello, good evening. My name is Dr. Cara Grant, and I'm here today in support of the county executive's budget. Bless you. I'm truly humbled to sit here. It says stand, but I'm not allowed to stand, I don't think. So, I'm truly humbled to sit here before you, representing those who have, like me, grown up in Montgomery County, those who've attended schools in Montgomery County, those who send their children. I have four sons. Three are still in school. One is, thank goodness, done, with Montgomery County graduate. I love Montgomery County so much, I never left. I became a teacher over 20 years ago in the district, and am now serving as an administrator with wellness programs like health and physical education. I'm here to advocate and support of the county executive's budget, which includes vital funds for public education through a proposed 10-cent property tax increase and reinvestment in other public services. Let me ask you, if we do not invest in our public services and public education, what will we yield for Montgomery County? It is observed that other counties surrounding us have already made this investment, and their investment is getting the ROI, is getting the return on investment, because people are leaving our district to go to theirs. Living, working, all of the things. We must invest now to set a better trajectory for our future, one that includes and elevates more of our student voices. You see them over there today. They are a representative group, the families. I'm sure if you have a family in MCPS, feel free to stand and support that, that we send students there. And what this does is, education is a social determinant of health. What it tells us in its research and evidence-based practice is that that environment of school gives you access, gives you wraparound services, and it is a systemic way to reduce the barriers that have caused us from redlining institutional racism and systemic racism that my family and others have had to deal with. And yes, I present white, Latino, whatever, but I am mixed black and white, multiracial. So, when you talk about funding and investing, this is what it is. It takes place here. Do you want a sense of belonging? Fund the budget. Montgomery County Public Schools is working to do that good work around anti-racist, anti-bias. It is uncomfortable conversation. Not everybody wants to talk about it or admit where our forefathers have set paths that are still being perpetuated today. However, it is a difficult and uncomfortable conversation that needs to happen. And if you're not going to fund the budget, you're saying that that doesn't matter. And those people, those kids, those black and brown children, those people that identify gay, straight, or trans, those people that are women trying to go into science and other marginalized groups of people, don't matter. An investment of 10-cent property tax increase. So, do you want to support perpetuating this lack when we have adjusted inflation? This is remarkable. We've been stagnant at 2010.
Ms. Grant?
Yes, sorry. Yeah. So, thank you. So, once again, just take a look at the students, and that's your answer.
Thank you. Ms. Rosello.
Buenas noches a todos los presentes, a cada uno de los legisladores y al concejal Albornoz. Mi nombre es Hilda Rosello. Vivo en el condado de Montgomery por 18 años. Estoy aquí porque tengo una motivación por nuestros jóvenes, por nuestros jóvenes de nuestro condado, jóvenes que podrían ser nuestros hijos.
Good evening to all of you. Good evening, councilmember Albornoz. My name is Hilda Rosello, and I have lived in Montgomery County for 18 years. I am here because I have great motivation and love for youth of our county, young people who could be our children.
Constantemente vemos noticias con tremendos dramas, jóvenes suicidas o homicidas. Ante eso, ellos deben haber pasado por un túnel de tristeza, de desesperanza, y tal vez de mucha depresión, o las dos cosas a la vez. No es fácil acceder a la salud mental, por eso los centros de crisis están saturados.
We constantly hear of tragic news, youth committing homicides, even suicides. They must have gone through a tunnel of sadness, hopelessness, and depression. Why? Because it is not easy to access mental health resources. Crisis centers are saturated.
Son los jóvenes que protagonizan páginas policiales. Cuando mis hijos eran pequeños y luego adolescentes, nunca encontré en los centros de recreación del condado algo que puede estimular sus habilidades. Solo encontraba basket o caminatas. Toqué una y otra vez cada centro recreacional, y me frustraba. Los niños, los jóvenes, y nosotros, los adultos, necesitamos la interrelación, la socialización, que es una ayuda tremendamente, ayuda a bajar la hormona del estrés.
Very often, our young adults are the stars of a crime scene. As my kids were growing up, I never found any programs that could stimulate their minds and their skills in the county recreation centers. I only found basketball or walks. This was a story that kept repeating itself in every recreation center, and it was very frustrating. Children and young adults need to socialize and practice activities that will stimulate their minds. This will help lower stress, and overall, it is very beneficial.
Miro el trabajo en estos días de buscar en varios centros de recreación programas que no son de alto costo, como dibujo, pintura, trabajos manuales, juegos de mesa, damas, ajedrez. Ajedrez es buenísimo, es, despierta mucho la creatividad, y no son de alto costo. Despierta de la ajedrez mayores habilidades. No es una gran inversión, y es muy importante porque socializan, se intercomunican. Definitivamente, eso les cambiaría mucho el estado de ánimo.
In recent days, I gave myself the task to search again in multiple recreation centers, and until this day, those programs do not exist. The programs that I request are not expensive to have. I am talking about activities such as drawing, painting, board games such as checkers, chess. These activities are an investment. They will stimulate the mind and will help our youth socialize. The participants would have the opportunity to intercommunicate and definitely will change their state of mind.
Un joven feliz es una promesa para el futuro. Si muchos de aquellos que fallecieron hubiesen tenido la oportunidad de socializar y empatizar en eventos sanos, no estaríamos lamentando tantas muertes. Muchos de ellos serían hombres de bien o mujeres de gran valor al servicio de la sociedad. Señores legisladores, ojalá puedan hacer algo por ellos, por nuestros jóvenes, y llegar a un acuerdo en voluntad, con amor, con amor al prójimo. Gracias, y estaremos orgullosos nosotros mismos en este gran proyecto.
A happy young person has a prosperous future ahead. If many of those who die had had the opportunity to socialize and participate in healthy events, we would not be lamenting so many deaths. Many of those lives could have been men and women of great value to society. Councilmembers, the power is in your hands, and I hope you can do something to save our youth. By doing so, it will make you all very proud. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosello. And the final speaker on this panel is Ms. Murick.
Good evening, President Glass and Montgomery County members. I am Sally Murick. I'm the coordinator for the Par儿 educator program at Montgomery County Public Schools, where I have served for over 30 years, providing children with special needs and equal and quality education. I have witnessed the shortfalls of the county budget and how it affects them. Shortages in staffing and turnover impact these children harder than others. Low wages and staffing shortages prevent us from retaining the talented educators we need to best serve our children. Furthermore, too many of our colleagues cannot afford the rising cost of living in Montgomery County. As a union member with SEIU Local 500, I am thankful for my brethren negotiating for better working conditions. Unfortunately, holding the line means losing more talented educational support professionals to attrition. Reductions in public funding have resulted in depressed wages for many public workers in this county. With rising costs and inflation, our families can afford less and less. As this council debates our country's budget needs, county's budget needs, one step at a time, I would ask you to consider County Executive Mark Elrich's proposal to provide revenue enhancements to fully fund our school system. Our children, our school system, and its hard-working educators cannot be asked to shoulder the hardships of this county's budget again and again and again. This is your chance to provide relief to the many families who serve this county each and every day. I ask you to fully fund all public services in Montgomery County and for your support increasing revenues to support our public schools. We urge you to pass the necessary property tax measures to ensure the full funding of Montgomery County Public Schools.
Thank you very much, Ms. Murick. Thank you all for your testimony this evening. Thank you. I'd like to call down the next panel. Nancy Austin, Karen Metzis, Adrian Clark Harrison, Evelyn Hoey, Victoria Thomas, and Alice Barnett. We know it's a little warm in here, not just from your testimony, but we'll get through this. Okay, Ms. Austin. Yes, just press that button. Thank you.
Good evening, President Glass and members of the county council and the community. My name is Nancy Austin. I am a school community health nurse employed by Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services. In my own recent experience when a family member needed care, the emergency room had limited staffing and the wait for care was worrisome. This mirrors our healthcare system. We are floundering due to a severe shortage of all healthcare workers, and that has trickled down to the schools, affecting the most vulnerable of our community, our children. The nursing shortage is in a severe crisis. There's a small applicant pool, many are retiring, and even more have left the profession. The dedication, cost of needed education, severity of the mental health problems, increased technology of wearable medical devices, and requisite learning, these all impact recruitment and retention. Top dollar is paid to nurses in the private sector, something the county has not kept current with. Why would a nurse work for us when down the road they offer so much more money with acceptable benefits? We just cannot be competitive when recruiting. School community health nursing is specialized. We play a critical role in the schools. We are pediatric specialists for students with special needs. We provide care coordination, public health care and instruction, quality improvement, leadership, and ensure adherence to the standards of practice. School health ensures a child with a chronic health condition is able to access an education. As with the shortage of staff in the private sector, we in school health have displayed a Herculean effort in caring for what I call a city of 160,000 students in 208 buildings. Since the beginning of this school year, over 340,000 students walked through the doors of a health room. Over 76,000 received medication, and 21,000 received a treatment. This can be anything from an asthma treatment, multiple daily injections of insulin, gastric tube feedings, and catheterizations. There were 425 911 calls, along with the 13 doses of Narcan given for opioid overdoses. This may very well explain our retention problem. It is distressing to be pulled in so many directions at once. We worry we will miss something, and we just pray we will not. We are small, but we are mighty. 122 merit-registered nurses are the health team leaders. We have 199 merit school health room technicians, which is not even one for every school. We must rely on contract staff to fill the shortage. It is a huge team effort. Forty-six years ago, I graduated as a registered nurse, joining what the latest Gallup poll says is "the most trusted profession." Sorry. It is an honor and a privilege to care for the next generation of Montgomery County residents, but we need all members of the county council to support the tax increase, to fund these urgent needs, and to further vote to pass this contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Is Karen Metzis here? Is Karen Metzis here? Karen Metzis, okay. Ms. Clark Harrison.
All right, does that work?
That works, you're on.
Good evening to the council. My name is Ariane Clark Harrison, and I am proud to be here as both a Montgomery County resident, Wheaton, Maryland, and elementary school principal with Montgomery County Public Schools. I serve as the Elementary Chapter Vice Chair of the Montgomery County Association of Administrators and Principals. I testify today in support of the tax increase for Montgomery County residents to fully fund the school system's FY24 budget. MCPS has been a symbol of the great potential of public education, recognized nationally for its achievements. Yet, just like everyone else, we are feeling the impact of the pandemic and want to ensure that our students have their academic success, their safety and security while attending school, as well as their mental and emotional health intact. We need funding to ensure that our students are safe and secure while in school. We have seen an uptick in domestic abuse cases, difficult child custody arrangements, as well as other societal stressors that fall on our doorstep. I have managed multiple angry family members this year, a significant increase from years past, without the backing of security, because our elementary schools are only allotted a roving security detail. In the news, we have all seen the significant increase in students dealing with mental and emotional stressors and self-medicating with the use of legal and illegal substances. What you don't see, though, are the student cases that don't get reported, the number of dysregulated students that I spend hours of my day trying to calm and develop behavioral plans for in order to ensure their safety, as well as the safety of other students in my building. This year, we have referred an unprecedented number of students in a kindergarten through second-grade school for therapeutic resources and have a waiting list for many seeking family therapy services. We must take proactive steps to tackle our youth mental health crisis, and we need the resources to do so. In her proposal, the superintendent has outlined the funding needs that will ensure that our students are on track for academic progress. In order to execute these plans, we must be fully staffed. Yet, when hiring, I have discovered that more often than not, teachers and teacher leaders in surrounding districts would have to take a pay cut to come to Montgomery County. Additionally, our school system is bleeding talent to other jurisdictions as teachers and administrators are electing to leave MCPS for places where they are not only compensated at higher rates, but they can also afford housing. How do we ensure that we keep our talent in Montgomery County? The budget proposed by the superintendent is not simply a suggestion, but rather an imperative on how we want to see Montgomery County continue to evolve as an outstanding place to both live and work. The safety and security of our schools, the mental health and well-being of our students, and the academic success of all is not negotiable. As our county executive has told us, slipping in these categories will hurt the county's property values far more and far longer than a property tax increase. Thank you so much for your time this evening. I, as a resident, want to ensure that our school system is fully funded so that I continue to see my county, Montgomery County, have a bright and prosperous future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark Harrison. I see Ms. Metzis has joined us. Ms. Metzis, you have three minutes.
I didn't hear you call my name earlier.
Turn that back on. Hit the button one more time. There you go.
Thank you. Great. On another note, thank you, President Glass and council, for the opportunity to testify on the budget. I represent the Climate Action Plan Coalition with a membership of 20 organizations. We are advocates and partners to help Montgomery County address the urgent issue of climate change that is increasingly harming our community. We support the county executive's interdepartmental climate budget, and we support the proposed 1.1 million for the Office of Food System Resilience, which technically should have been in the interdepartmental climate budget. We are pleased to see increased investments in trees, rain skates, solar energy, electrification, equity, and attention to resilience, all of which have the co-benefit of building pathways to green jobs. We noted that the executive adds funding for the Office of People's Council. We worked with the planning board to develop the climate assessment template, and we follow the zoning and master planning efforts. We have come to appreciate the complexity of land use planning and would find a people's council invaluable. We support this budget line item. All that said, the Council of Government's greenhouse gas inventory shows that we are not on track to reach our climate emergency goals. Therefore, we request a few other items. The county government cannot achieve our greenhouse gas goals without more involvement of the public. We need a massive public outreach campaign, similar to what was done for COVID, to convey the importance of choices that only individuals can make. But outreach received the lowest allocation in the budget. We urge you to add $2 million for a massive public outreach campaign to promote behaviors that reduce greenhouse gas emissions and improve resilience. The executive plans to reduce the amount of waste produced and to end the climate-damaging incineration of recoverable materials. We request a total of five new positions, rather than only three, to develop and implement new waste reduction, reuse, and recycling programs. The executive proposes $1 million for residential electrification retrofits for low-to-middle-income households. So they benefit from upgraded service without raising the cost of housing. We strongly urge the council to raise this to $2 million or more per year to accelerate progress and also create more pathways to jobs. We see that the Parks Department is receiving $4 million short of what it needs to keep up with inflation, reflecting only a 4% inflation increase. To ensure that sequestration and adaptation services it provides do not decline, we request that that $4 million be added back to the Parks budget. We are also happy that the Green Bank can fund resilience, but we are concerned that the bank may reduce its investment in energy efficiency and electrification. Our budget request was not accepted, so we want to work with you to identify ways to create more leverage and infusion of funds for Green Bank resilience efforts. Council members, the fact that we are in a climate emergency is not just a slogan. You read the news every day of accelerating ice sheet loss, historic droughts and massive rainfalls, forest fires, coastal inundation, and the heartbreaking disasters befalling the most vulnerable. It is time to step up our game and get serious about addressing the climate emergency. Please add the resources needed to accelerate our progress on this vital issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hoey. You've got three minutes.
Good evening, Montgomery County Council President Evan Glass, Vice President Andrew Friesen, esteemed council members and distinguished guests. What is affordable housing and how does it affect the underprivileged in our communities? Affordable housing is housing we can afford to pay monthly on time without incurring late fees, feeling stressed, depressed, and strained that can create housing insecurities for us, along with other insecurities we already face. For example, deciding how to pay, how much to pay on a monthly utility bill. My name is Evelyn Hoey. I have lived in Montgomery County, Maryland for 21 years, currently residing in Germantown, District 2. I am a participant in the Community Action Institute, CAI, program. I am here to advocate and ask Montgomery County Council to allocate additional fundings in the 2024 budget and beyond for more affordable housing and to implement a rent control and rent stabilization program throughout Montgomery County. In the state of Maryland, there are two counties, Frederick County and Washington County, that has a form of rent control. Within Montgomery County, the city of Tacoma Park has a rent stabilization program that has been in existence for years. Therefore, my question for the council is, why does Montgomery County, the whole Montgomery County, not have a rent stabilization and rent control program? Over the years, I have found it incredibly challenging to maintain monthly expenses, especially when my income and that is like many other residents in the county is not comparable to the rising cost of living in Montgomery County. I am in support of Bill 16-23, Rent Stabilization, the Home Act. Under this bill, the maximum allowance for rent increases up to 3%. I am advocating and urging the council to pass this bill. In 2021, according to the U.S. Census American Community Survey, the median gross rent in Montgomery County was about $1,821 a month. It is estimated 23% of Montgomery County renters pay 50% or more over their income in monthly housing costs. This is rent burden. With the rising cost of rent in Montgomery County, it can be a deterrent for people moving into the county and forcing current residents to seek housing in other areas with rent-sensitive and sensible, with rent sensitivity outside of Montgomery County. Again, I am asking the council to ensure that fundings is allocated in the 2024 budget and beyond for more affordable housing in Montgomery County, to include rent control and rent stabilization. Thank you for your time, attention, and allowing me to speak on this serious matter. I have submitted a copy of my written testimony.
Thank you very much. You get bonus points for coming in at three minutes.
I'm sorry.
You get bonus points for coming in at three minutes.
Thank you.
Ms. Thomas.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Thomas, and I'm Vice Chair of Montgomery County Partners for Animal Wellbeing, MPA, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit animal welfare organization. Our programs include fostering and adopting out homeless animals, paying special vet care for owners who can't afford it, and running a pet food pantry in partnership with Montgomery County Animal Services and Adoption Center, McCasick. I want to thank the council for this opportunity to speak in favor of the proposed low-cost spay-neuter clinic for Montgomery County, of which MPA, along with several other nonprofits, have been the main driving forces with the full support and cooperation of the Office of Animal Services. Even though ours is one of the richest and most diverse counties in Maryland, there are large portions where residents lack the resources to feed their families, including their pets. As I mentioned, MPA runs a weekly pet food distribution alongside a human pantry. We started our pet food distribution during the pandemic, never managing, imagining that three years later we would still be in operation. But the need hasn't lessened for either human or pet food. Last year, we distributed over 66,000 pounds of pet food. These people who can't afford food for their families or their beloved pets certainly cannot afford hundreds of dollars to spay and neuter their pets and provide basic vet care, which is what the proposed clinic would supply. We believe this is a fairness issue, an equity issue, and I would even argue a moral and an ethical issue. Our pets are important members of our families. They give us unconditional love, and the emotional benefits of pets are well documented. This councilman Al Bernas has said this is also a mental health issue. And there are important health benefits to the pets themselves. Spaying and neutering helps prevent conditions such as uterine infections, mammary and prostate cancer, and behavioral issues such as spraying and roaming. But besides these reasons, the spay-neuter clinic is a prudent investment because in the long run, it will reduce cost to the county by reducing the number of stray and surrendered animals entering McCasick and the number of spay-neuter surgeries the county vets will have to perform. Currently, about 70% of the cats and dogs entering McCasick are not altered, which is one of the reasons Director Koenig supports this effort. We are very fortunate to have Dr. Roxanne Barak, a skilled veterinarian who specializes in spay-neuter surgeries, and you heard who you heard from a few minutes ago, lending her expertise, experience, and skill to the spay-neuter initiative. Therefore, for all of these reasons, as well as the fact that a spay-neuter clinic is mandated in Chapter 5 of the county code, I urge you to support this much-needed and long-overdue resource for our county residents, both human and furry.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thomas. Final speaker on this panel is Ms. Barnett.
Good evening. How y'all doing? Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Alice Barnett, and I am here to speak in support of an additional $1 million in funding for the Black Physicians and Healthcare Network. I'm speaking to you this evening as a private citizen, but when my pastor found out that I was speaking here, the Reverend Dr. Brian O'Bellamy, senior pastor at Mount Calvary Baptist Church in Rockville, where I am Chair of the Health and Wellness Ministry there, insisted that I make it known that he is in support of the Black Physicians Healthcare Network's additional funding. He thinks that they have made significant impact in the African-American community in Rockville, Maryland. As I sit here before you this evening, I reflect on and identify with how Fannie Lou Hamer must have felt on that night in December 1964, when she stood at that podium in that church in Harlem and uttered the now-famous words, "I am sick and tired of being sick and tired," because, ladies and gentlemen, so am I. I've worked as a healthcare professional for more than 40 years. I've given testimony before legislative bodies like this one's at all levels of government numerous times. My remarks before you this evening focus on the same issues as when I first began testifying before legislative bodies in the 1980s. Health disparities in the black community, lack of culturally sensitive providers, and access to affordable care. Yes, I'm sick and tired. Many models of healthcare have been created, demonstration projects have been developed, and legislation has been enacted to address these deficiencies. Some have been successful, some not so. The interesting thing is that once these programs are successful, funding mysteriously is cut off or decreased. The Black Physicians and Healthcare Network have made significant inroads in providing access to culturally sensitive physical, dental, and mental services for African-American and black residents in Montgomery County. Without additional funding, continued access to this service is not certain. Alternative suggestions for covering the gap in services that will occur as a result of insufficient funding do not address the fundamental problems that exist in current health system delivery in Montgomery County. Ramifications, if this funding is not provided. An already overburdened Montgomery Care's delivery system will be more overburdened with the COVID Emergency Act, Assistance Act ending. The KFCFF says that, I don't remember my time, says that between 5 million and 14 million people will lose Medicaid coverage, again, Montgomery Care being overburdened. I just ask you this evening to consider the fine work that this work, this organization, has done, and without the additional funding, that would not be possible. Please consider the additional funding.
Thank you, Ms. Barnett. Thank you to everybody on this panel for your testimony this evening. For the next panel, I'd like to invite Jeffrey T. Brown, Nubia Ladino, Christopher Cano, Cheryl Clark, Ricardo Hernandez, and Katie Angel to come on down. Okay, we'll start with Mr. Brown.
Can you hear me?
We hear you.
All right. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. My name is Jeff Brown, and I am the principal of Roberto Clemente Middle School. I've had the opportunity to lead the RCMS community for the past eight years, and I'm very proud of the students and the community of Germantown. During my 20 years of working for MCPS, I have served the communities of Poolsville, Damascus, Richard Montgomery, Wooton, Seneca Valley, and finally, Roberto Clemente. Also, I've been a member of all three unions. I'm the son of two retired MCPS educators and the nephew of two amazing women who also retired from MCPS as SEIU members. In summary, I'm a dedicated, children-loving, MCPS educator. It's in my blood. However, even with these deeply rooted intrinsic motivations, the last several years have tested my resolve and the other dedicated educators in ways we never thought possible. As we all know and felt, the COVID pandemic was an accelerant of challenging working conditions. On our return to in-person instruction, we properly focused our efforts and resources on wellness. You may not realize the non-typical ways in which schools are supporting wellness. Allow me to share a few. Yesterday, I met with a parent to review her resume so she could prepare for a new job to support her family. The day before that, The day before that, a student in crisis returned to the building late at night, knowing that she would find safe adults. My staff and I returned to the school to support her through her time of need. During this past holiday season, our counselors and staff collected over and provided over 1,000 gifts for students to give to their family members. I could go on with the many and unique and forgotten ways we ask schools to support our children, but for time, I will stop. The great tension with wellness in education is that we expect schools to support everyone, everywhere, all of the time, no matter the issue, but we tell stressed educators to take care of themselves. Part of caring for us would include fully funding the county executive's proposed budget to ensure schools have the positions, resources, highly qualified people, and competitive compensation. With the support and vision of our superintendent, Roberto Clemente Middle School has been working to accomplish the following: end hate, bias, and racism. This is not a lofty goal. This is not a long-term vision. This is our real daily goal. We aligned all of our activities, student groups, course offerings, lessons, adults, resources, and efforts to end racism every day. Schools are tackling challenging societal issues like this each day. Beyond being proud of this work, I share this to demonstrate the complexity of working in schools these days. Clemente's educators are not unique. Each school has a similar but different story to share. While it is challenging, we love it. We don't wish any of it away, but in truth, it is very lonely. We could use your support. Most importantly, you can vote to fully fund the school system's proposed budget. Working conditions are learning conditions, and if we expect the greatest from our staff, we must provide the greatest MCPS budget in history. Our staff are worth it, our children are worth it, and our community is worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Brown. Ms. Ladino?
Honorable members of the Council of Montgomery County, in a ceremony for the security of public, cordial salute. My name is Nubia Ladino, resident of Montgomery County, corresponding to the locality of the third silver spring. There is a problem of grave insecurity public that they will attend to immediately the governability. For the tanto solicit more funds economic in security public and study sobre the impact of violence domestic in the families of no casual. Solicito como one of the lives the victim is resident in Maryland, the significant requisitos. Que los recursos economicos que se destinan para la seguridad publica se incrementen attending those factors in security civil. Por lo tanto, invite al trabajo conjunto entre nuestros gobernantes, la comunidad y la protection de toda sociedad en conjunto con los miembros del departamento de policia para incrementar el orden civil. Primero, según las statistics del crime in Montgomery County, el departamento de policia clasifica en una escala de uno crime bajo a 100 crime alto. El crime violento de Montgomery County son el 35.5%. El promedio de la nación está en 35.4%. Podemos analizar que la delincuencia incrementado in nuestra comunidad mayormente afectando nuestros hijos en un 13% victimas de una sociedad in decomposition.
Honorable Montgomery County Council, good evening. My name is Nubia Ladino, and I am a resident of Silver Spring District 3 in Montgomery County. There are important problems in public safety that need to be addressed. These issues can be addressed with governability and economic funds. I am requesting to allocate more funds to public service, education, and the impact of domestic violence among non-married couples living together. I am requesting, as a Maryland resident and as a victim of these issues, to do the following: An increment of funds in public safety to address civil safety. I ask to work together, along with government rulers, community, and police departments towards civil order. According to statistics, with one being a low level of crime in 100, a high level of crime, Montgomery County is at 33.5% in violent crime, and the U.S. average is 35.4. These numbers show that the crime has increased in our community, and the people who are most affected are our children. Out of all the crimes, children are involved in 13% of those crimes.
Secondo, solicit como una de tantas familias victimas que se destinan recursos economicos para estudios legales referente a los estatutos jurídicos de familia que conllevan a la protección de convivencia de no casados, que de igual manera conforman una familia ante la sociedad. Por lo tanto, no a la discriminación de ninguna familia en cualquiera que sea su género, de convivencia de cohabitantes, la cual puede lograrse mediante la implantación de leyes jurídicas y políticas enteras en el funcionamiento de nuestras familias multiculturales de Maryland. La oficina del censo de Estados Unidos ha informado de un aumento dramático en el número de cohabitantes durante las últimas tres décadas. El número de cohabitantes de se triplicó de 1970 a 1980, saltando de 523,000 a 1,560,000. De 1980 a 1990, el número pasó de 1,589,000 a 2,856,000. El total de convivientes no casados se situó en 5,475,768, incluida las parejas del mismo sexo. Este fue un aumento del 72% en la última década. El aumento de parejas no casadas en Maryland es del 46.9%. Sinceramente, Nubia Ladino, al servicio comunitario.
I am requesting to allocate funds for legal help, especially with family law. Families need to be protected even if they are not legally married. There should be, there shouldn't be any discrimination against families that cohabitate without being married. This change can be done with a law to cover our multicultural families in Maryland. According to the U.S. Census, there has been a dramatic increase in cohabitating couples in the last three decades. The number of couples cohabitating tripled from 1970 to 1980, from 523,000 to 1,560,000. From 1980 to 1990, the numbers went from 1,589,000 to 2,856,000. The total number of non-married couples living together has increased to 5,475,768, including same-sex couples. This was an increase of 72% in the last decade. The increase of cohabitating couples in Maryland was 46.9%. Thank you, Nubia Ladino.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ladino. Mr. Cano?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christopher Cano, the coordinator for Member Political Engagement at SEIU Local 500. Members of the county council, as you take up the most important item this year, the operating budget for fiscal year 2024, I would implore you to consider what not fully funding all county services will mean. First responders like our firefighters not having lifesaving equipment, police officers understaffed and unable to adequately respond to our safety concerns, special needs children in our school system without support and guidance, maintenance in our public buildings falling short, putting our health and safety at risk. Many of these scenarios are already a reality. Do not exacerbate them further by failing to fully fund the budget. And this includes supporting the revenue enhancements put forward by the county executive to fund our school system. The cost of raising taxes is a challenge that no public official wishes to shoulder. Yet I ask you, what is the cost of inaction? Who will you prioritize funding? Fire rescue, police, social workers, healthcare, teachers? Who will you cast aside for the sake of saving folks a few dimes in their taxes? Special needs children, building maintenance workers, bus drivers? The fact is, you need not make these hard choices. You need but make the courageous one and fully fund the operating budget for all county services with the needed revenue enhancements to support our school system in Montgomery County. Do not ask the children of this county to bear the budget, the burden of budget shortfalls and a lack of political will. Stand up today for our children, our educators, and our hard-working public service employees in Montgomery County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cano. Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Good evening, members of our Montgomery County Council. My name is Cheryl Clark, and I'm a resident of Montgomery County, and I'm a principal in the school system. I'm here this evening to urge your support and funding entirely the school district's budget as it's been presented. The proposed budget represents an investment in the most significant components of a quality, world-class educational organization, investment in its highly trained and talented staff. I am proud to share that I am an MCPS graduate of Seneca Valley High School. After graduating from Montgomery College, then the University of Maryland, I began my teaching career and had the privilege of working alongside amazing educators, teacher colleagues, and strong school principals. After graduate work, I became a school administrator early in my career, and I'm happy to share that I had wonderful mentors who had vision and leadership qualities which had a positive influence on me, and for these folks, I'm grateful. It is concerning to me that our district has already lost a great deal of institutional knowledge and experienced and talented leaders who have moved on from MCPS to other districts. I am a 35-year veteran of MCPS with over 27 years as a building administrator. In addition to my service as a teacher and administrator, I'm a parent of two former MCPS students who are now thriving as young adults. My own children had the good fortune to learn from skilled and caring teachers. They thrived in schools that were safe and had positive proactive leaders. In their educational success story, it was the people who mattered the most. I have believed from the beginning of my career that it is the human beings in a school who determine its success or failure and how well it serves all students. We need to be able to create the best fit for optimal learning for every student in our schools. This kind of service to children isn't easily done. It requires educators and leaders who rise to the top of their professions. Our district must be able to attract and retain teachers and leaders who can and will do this for our students. Our students deserve and require this from us. Neighboring counties and school districts in our area understand this, and they have demonstrated this by approving adequate and even robust funding for their schools. I have a history with MCPS, and I believe that we are at a crossroads in terms of attracting and keeping skilled, talented, and dynamic educators. From my MCPS perspective, as a former student, teacher, and parent, and as well as a current principal, I look to you, the leaders of our county, to fund a budget that puts our students, their well-being, and their education as the biggest priority. Please do your part and fund the entire MCPS budget. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Principal Clark. Thank you. Mr. Hernandez?
Good evening, esteemed council members. My name is Ricardo Hernandez, Assistant Principal of Paint Branch High School, and a 16-year MCPS employee. And recently, I was named the Maryland State Secondary Schools Assistant Principal of the Year. I come before you today to ask your support in passing the 10-cent tax to fully support the county executive's budget. Your support is critical in providing the much-needed support to our schools and our community. Education and the needs of our students have changed. To do this work, the budget represents an important investment in people, namely, a highly qualified administrator, teacher, and support service professional in every position. This is essential to improving academics and providing the services our students and families critically need. When it started in 2007, MCPS was the top school system in Maryland. Since then, it has faltered, in part to the loss of the institutional knowledge, the human capital, and the potential human capital that we were able to attract. To combat this, we must be competitive in our wages in order to recruit and retain quality employees. The competitive nature of today's employment environment requires this. In recent years, I have seen too many teachers and administrators leave the system for surrounding jurisdictions for better compensation and quality of life. We once were the county that people wanted to live and work in. That has now changed. With this budget and your full approval, we will once again be the county that people want to live and work in. This community is a decade behind in per-people funding, easily fifth in the state, and combined with high inflation, it means that our schools are currently significantly underfunded. A targeted tax increase is the right thing to do to move our county forward. Our neighbors in Howard, Frederick, Prince George's, and Fairfax County all pay higher taxes. We are at a critical crossroads. The future of Montgomery County government and the services it provides will be determined by how well we do for our students today. Now is the time to do whatever it takes to do the right thing for, by our children. Our future and the future of our children depends on it. I ask you to fully fund our school system and the executive's budget. This is the right thing to do today. Doing the right thing is often the hardest thing to do. I ask you to do the right thing and vote for this 10-cent increase to meet the budget needs of the county. While the impact on families of a 10-cent increase will be minimal, the impact for our students and our staff will be significant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez, and congratulations on your recognition as Assistant Principal of the Year. That's, that's wonderful. Applause for that. And the last speaker on this panel is Ms. Angel.
Good evening to all. Buenas noches a todos. My name is Katie Angel. I have worked for Montgomery County of Recreation. Actually, I just came back to Montgomery County Recreation under a year. I started in Montgomery County Recreation 2010, and then due to the budget cuts, I was, basically, my position was eliminated. I was transferred to the HHS. I recently came back to Recreation. I'm the Senate Director of the Long Branch Community Center, and while they love incommunities, which I have seen that we urgently need this budget to be passed. We need to create activities for our seniors, for our kids that are up there doing things that they shouldn't be doing. We need to be more proactive and do more for our communities and be able to provide more activities so they can come inside to our buildings. Their buildings are beautiful. We created beautiful buildings, but they're empty. We need to do more so they can actually come inside and be able to spend the time, be able to do. I urgently for you guys to really look into this matter. During the economic, the Recreation Departments, they were undercuts because of the teens and teenagers and seniors. They use our programs and likely, due to the budget cuts, there is no programs for them to be. There is no programs for them to participate. Our decision is to make the environment feel them safe. Politically, it's being eliminated, and it's basically, there's no programs out there for our kids, our seniors, our adults. We urge that the quality of life services like Recreation Departments are not essential to some people. However, we have to support the growth and the development of our common teens and children, and we have to serve our senior citizens. Somehow, they were, in the past, were young adults and were able to serve the community. Now they're seniors, and we have to provide for them. We give, our senior programs are limited, and there is not a lot to do for them. We have to emphasize that one day, we're going to be there. One day, we're going to be old. One day, we're going to be seniors, and we're going to be listening to their stories, and we want to make sure that we're there to provide for them. Right now, we healthy. Right now, we able to move, and we able to do. One day, we're not going to be. So let's do something now for the future. During the COVID, during the economy, the centers were closed. The facilities were closed due to political reasons and political and health reason, whatever decision was made. They were closed. They were used for nothing. So now they reopen. Let's build something positive for them, for everybody, for you guys. You guys have visited my community center, and thank you for that, and I appreciate that. At this time, I want to emphasize the 10:40 hours that everyone, seasonal staff, are able to work in a year. You're aware of the 10:40s. It's something that is, it breaks my heart that I can't work my staff more than 20 hours per week. Why? Because they're limited. I'm limited. I cannot give them more than 10:40 hours a year. If they do, if I use them, basically, I have to tell them, there's no more hours for you. And with that said, I beg you, please reconsider this. We need, I urge for the budget to be passed. This is the way. Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you, Ms. Angel. Thank you all for your testimony this evening. I'd like to call up the next panel. Sierra Caprera, Audra Doojie, Katie Seager, Greg Bishop, Kathleen Wee, and Monica Reyes.
Good evening, Council President Glass and County Council members. I am Sierra Caprera, and I'm a Rockville resident, co-president of the Montgomery County School Psychologists Association, and the 2022 Montgomery County and Maryland State School Psychologist of the Year. On behalf of my colleagues in MCPS, I'm here to speak in support of the 10-cent revenue adjustment in order to fully fund the MCPS operating budget. By fully funding the MCPS operating budget, MCPS will be able to increase salaries for its school psychologists so that MCPS can fill its currently vacant school psychologist positions. Filling those positions can ensure that all schools and special education programs in the county have equitable access to the assessment, counseling, consultation, and crisis-related services that school psychologists provide. MCPS currently has the lowest starting salary for school psychologists among our neighboring counties. Lower salaries have recently made it very difficult for MCPS to recruit and retain school psychologists. My fear is that this will become a cycle. As some school psychologists retire to leave, MCPS will continue to struggle to fill those new vacancies, as well as the existing vacancies. That increased workload will fall to those school psychologists who remain in MCPS until they can no longer bear the burden of being overworked and underpaid if things do not change. Currently, I'm the only school psychologist serving three elementary schools, though some weeks I have had to go to up to five different schools in order to support schools that currently have unfilled school psychologist positions. When I meet with those elementary school children, there are times when I have to explain to them why they can't meet with me the next day because I will be at one of my other schools. Their eyes get big and they say, "You have three schools? That's too many." While some of our youngest community members have already figured out that school psychologists are being stretched too thin, it is our adolescent community members that have realized that they're the ones that pay the price with their mental health. They are demanding better because they deserve better. MCPS has the hardest-working school psychologists in the state, and they are wholeheartedly dedicated to helping children thrive. So my hope for the future well-being of Montgomery County's children and families is that MCPS will be able to provide competitive salaries in order to hire enough school psychologists that each school psychologist serves fewer schools and is able to increase equitable access to the special education and mental health services for the children of Montgomery County. Why are we asking for help from you? Because we are already doing all that we can, from educating MCPS students about school psychology as a future career, to recruiting school psychologists from graduate school programs. We have also engaged in problem-solving with MCPS leaders and collaborated with state lawmakers in an effort to increase funding for school psychologist positions and to offer incentives for school psychologists that choose Maryland. Now we need you to choose to invest in MCPS so that more school psychologists choose Montgomery County. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Ms. Caprera, and again, congratulations on being honored with School Psychologist of the Year. All the stars have come out tonight. Next, Ms. Dujie.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Audra Dujie. I'm an employee of the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services, a single mom to an 11-year-old and a 15-year-old. I work as a member of the mobile crisis team and work at the Crisis Center answering phones, seeing walk-ins, assisting to manage the lobby, entering data, taking reports, and activating services for CPS, APS, trauma services. Mobile crisis teams are frontline public safety employees, but many don't see us as such. During COVID, we didn't retreat to our homes and get to telework. We had to be able to serve the Montgomery County community. We stepped up and did our jobs, and we still do that today. We're really good at what we do, and we really love doing the work that we do. There's no such option for frontline employees to telework at the Crisis Center. We are supposed to be able to do, I'm sorry, what we are supposed to be able to do as part of the mobile crisis response team and what we are able to do are vastly different. The folks who make decisions about how we respond to the people experiencing mental health crises just don't understand what we deal with. We are stretched super thin, and we keep losing people to retirements, other jurisdictions, and the public sector. We are down many, many therapists. There are supposed to be three fully-staffed crisis teams running Monday to Friday in this county. We're supposed to have a team in Silver Spring, one in Rockville, one in Germantown. That's a fantasy. We can't keep or hire employees to fully staff these teams. When you want a team in Silver Spring, you're taking Rockville and spreading it to its bare bones. That's not safe. Any HHS employee will agree that ours is an incredibly difficult job, not just those of us who work at the Crisis Center, but those who work in trauma services, child welfare, adult protective services, school health, and the rest of everyone in HHS. We see the most vulnerable and those experiencing unimaginable and dangerous mental health situations. On top of dealing with the burnout and the lure of better-paying private sector opportunities, we also deal with comparisons that are unjustified and inappropriate. In Montgomery County, our Crisis Center staffs an office that allows walk-in treatment and telephone services 24/7, every single day, every holiday. We're available for anyone in need to come to the Crisis Center. Counterparts in other surrounding counties and elsewhere get close to the same pay, and they're not asked to provide the same level of service that we do here in Montgomery County. It's no wonder that so many staff leave and go elsewhere. Plus, now we're being asked to go without police on crisis calls.
Ms. Dujie.
You know, I've had 23 years of experience at the Crisis Center. We need police with us on many, many occasions, okay? So basically, please, we need you to improve the compensation and benefits package so we can truly staff the Crisis Center and attract and retain excellent employees. We do specialized work, and it's very important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Seeger.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Seeger, and I'm a deputy sheriff of the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office. I've been working here for just under two years, and I've recently been placed in our administrative division, focusing on specifically recruiting. I'm here tonight to urge the council to consider passing the requested property tax increase. Since before COVID, the sworn deputies in the sheriff's office has been tasked with doing more with less, and then COVID only increased our issues. We're down a significant number of deputies. A COVID-induced backlog in the courts has caused immense issues across the entire department. Court and transportation, one of our biggest functions in the sheriff's office, is so busy that we're having to pull deputies from other sections just to fill those vacancies for the day, just to fill those vacancies in court, just to get those prisoners transported up and down the road. Those sections are critical to get our everyday job done. We've been pulling from the domestic violence section, from our fugitive section, from our civil process sections, our child support sections, our eviction sections, and we're even pulling administrative deputies, administrative lieutenants, and administrative captains just to fill the courts. Several times, we've even had the chief of the sheriff's office have to sit in court hearings because we have no one to staff them. These vacancies are a public safety hazard, and our deputies are feeling incredibly overwhelmed and incredibly underappreciated. Fatigue, burnout, and low morale can cause mistakes and extreme safety risks. They've certainly been leading to retention issues like deputies assigned to specialized sections, having to staff court all day, higher-ranking administration in court, and losing the ability to run their sections solely due to just staffing a courtroom. We've also lost plenty of deputies due to retirement, and we're having issues recruiting new staff because law enforcement in general has become less of an attractive option for people who genuinely want to protect and serve their community. By fully funding this contract and by passing the county executive's requested tax increase can help us address these issues and serve our county in the best way that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seeger. Mr. Bishop.
Good evening, President Glass and the Montgomery County Council members. My name is Greg Bishop, and I'm the Building Service Manager at Bethesda Chevy Chase High School. In my many years of service keeping our schools safe, clean, and operating comfortably, I've seen the ups and downs of public budgets and how they affect our schools, our jobs, and our children. As a union member with SEIU Local 500, I am thankful for my brothers and sisters holding the line and negotiating for better working conditionings. Unfortunately, one cannot get blood from a turnip. Reduction is public funding has resulted in depressed wages for public sector workers. With the rising cost and inflation, this means our family budgets afford less and less. A building service worker grade six cannot afford to live in this county which they serve. It is heartbreaking to lose good workers because of this. Many times, I've had a worker inform me that they are quitting because they can make more money at McDonald's or Wegmans. Low wages prevent us from retaining the talented folks that we need to keep things operating smoothly. Too many of our public workers cannot afford the rising costs of living in Montgomery County. As the council debates everything from rent stabilization to budget needs, I would implore you to consider County Executive Mark Elrich's proposal to provide revenue enhancement to fully fund our school system. A slight increase in property taxes for some will mean the ability to stay in a home for many others. Our children, our children in our school system and its workers cannot be asked to bear the hardships of the county budget's constraints again. Too many of our families are already sacrificing so much. This is your opportunity to make it stop, to provide relief. I ask you for all public services in this county to be fully funded and for your support increasing revenues to support our public schools. We urge you to pass the necessary property tax measures to ensure the full funding of Montgomery County public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Thank you. Next, Ms. Wee.
My name is Kathleen Wee. I work for Montgomery County Public Libraries at the White Oak Branch. I have a master's in library science, and I've been with the county for 23 years. For those of you doing the math, I started when I was 12. Even before the pandemic, the library served as a crucial first point of contact for county residents, where one of the first places people will go with vastly different asks from us. They don't just check out books. They need help with everything. And as you know, Montgomery County is a very expensive place to live in. In order to retain and attract the best librarians, we need to remain competitive with private sector job market in other nearby counties. The stress of being a public librarian impacts our ability to keep and retain and attract quality staff. Librarians have so much on their plate. The majority of our time, we are on the information desk, where I can assure you that information divide is real. I have many, many customers who have no ability to use a computer. They must scan things. They must apply for jobs. They must even print out a W-2. They need help with all of that, and that's the majority of our time. In the meantime, we have to provide customers with programming, unique, original programming, all ages, children, teens, adults, older adults. And at the same time, we need to make sure our buildings are safe. Many of us don't have any security, so we need to make sure the buildings are safe for both employees and our customers. At the larger branches, this can be time-consuming and stressful. Librarians develop reading lists. They support book clubs. I send books to people who are at home and can't come to the library. All of this, many of us do, like me, bilingually. Finally, we are also now open on Sundays for eight hours, which is double our pre-pandemic Sunday hours. Despite those increased hours, we have not added more staff, so essentially, we are doing more with less. The county library system is an extension of the public education system in this county. Unfortunately, because our programs are viewed as nonessential, we've been the first county department on the chopping block when it has been determined that cuts are needed. Since even before COVID, there's been a pattern of disinvestment in our library system. I remember at the height of the pandemic, one council member telling the director, "Why don't you just open the doors with volunteers?" That's how little respect he had for our profession. Like most library systems, Montgomery County's libraries play an outsized role in early childhood literacy and do so much to support family and child development. COVID, as you know, had an impact on educational readiness of the children in our community, has affected mental health of much of our population. We need to rebuild our capacity to support our families as we climb our way out of this pandemic and its effects. We need to expand access to our programs, retain highly-qualified staff, and all of this, any improvements we can make in our county revenue can fund this. Fund our programs, support the educational goals in this county. It should get our full support, and the next time you guys want a photo op, which I know you all do, that's storytime, at least you can go in and say, "I supported this program."
Thank you, Ms. Wee. Last speaker on this panel is Ms. Reyes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President Evan Glass and distinguished council member. My name is Monica Reyes and a community activist. I'm asking you for funds for the school for extraprogrammatic activities, as dancing, acting, and any other artistic expression. Due to the fentanyl crisis, our children are dying in our school, which is terrible and really pain me, and I'm really sad because some of my friends are dying. Due to the, sorry. This activity can keep the children busy with a purpose. Please let help our children. We must protect them. A child with a purpose is successful for adults. We also demand that you approve the school budget, not only approve, but increase it, because if you increase the budget, a lot of children will have these activities, and a lot of children benefit from this. And asking you, please, protect our children. Please approve the school budget. It's important for the community. It's important for the society, and it's important for the nation overall. So thank you, and begging you to do that, and that will be the best choice that you have ever done as a council member.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Thank you all for your testimony this evening. The next panel I'd invite down, David Stein, Gloria Ralph, Angela Wolf, Christopher Hallams, Okay, Mr. Stein.
Good evening, President Glass and council members. My name is David Stein. I've been a classroom teacher for 29 years, and I currently teach math at Blair High School, and I also serve as treasurer of MCEA. I am here to urge you to support the county executive's budget and the required tax increases which will fully fund the MCPS budget at the level our students and educators need, not, council members, what we want, but what we need. Quite simply, our educators are drowning in their workloads. In my statistics classes, we focus on project-based learning, but projects like those require meticulous planning time, and we don't have enough time in our day, and many of us have far too much scrutiny in the planning periods we do have. And then PLC and IEP meetings make time management even more difficult. Furthermore, substitute and staff shortages force teachers to cover for others, taking away whatever planning time is left. And honestly, as a secondary teacher, my planning time is comparatively greater than that of my elementary colleagues. The scarcity of free minutes that they have to plan for effective instructions is simply appalling. We must fix this, but any real solution will require funds, and those are funds that the council needs to provide. Furthermore, MCPS must improve its salary structure to attract and retain quality teachers. For context, Blair is a school where roughly 76% of the students are non-white, and we know that children need to see people like themselves reflected positively in the world around them. We know that students thrive when they have teachers who look like themselves. But what are we doing to ensure that MCPS's faculty is as diverse as our majority students' of color school system? A high school student recently told one of my colleagues that they were the first black teacher they ever had. That's shameful. Instead of choosing to become teachers, a lot of excellent black and brown candidates are choosing higher-paying jobs rather than struggling to live here and work in MCPS. I have colleagues who are personally priced out of the county. Others live in faraway counties, and they drive an hour or more to work in a community where they can't afford to live. Now, the blueprint for Maryland's future does require that we have a beginning salary of $60,000, but for us, that's a double-edged sword. With housing prices as high as they are in Montgomery County, we need to go well beyond $60,000 to keep competitive with the counties that have lower cost of living around us. Competitive salaries are needed to ensure diverse recruitment and better learning outcome for our kids. And with at least six of your votes, MCPS can do more to recruit and retain diverse educators and staff. With, with six of your votes, we can begin to solve our educator workload problems. And with six of your votes, you can join us in FLP, in SEIU, in McGO, McCAP, IAFF, as we are all united for our kids, our communities, and our future. If we don't act now and provide the funding our schools need, we are exacerbating a deepening crisis situation in our schools. I urge every single one of you to stand up and do your part to create a truly diverse, equitable, and flourishing school community for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Ms. Ralph.
It can't possibly be worse next year. That's what I tell myself every year that I've made the decision to return to teach at MCPS. This year, I will pack up my classroom and not allow that little voice in my head to convince me that next year will be different. How can I after 23 years? I'm Gloria Seraphini Ralph, the second grade team lead at Glen Allen Elementary School. I've given half my life to this profession and my students because it's been the right thing to do and it makes me feel good to help students. It does not feel good anymore. You know what we continue to hear from some elected officials and attendees this week? A little bit of misogyny mixed with a sprinkle with a lot of nonsense. We've heard that money simply does not exist for elementary school teachers to have their planning time restored. This argument is disgusting because it means you're all okay with the free labor that me and other elementary school teachers have no choice but to try because it's the only way to teach our communities. This argument, the "there's no money" argument used to reject us asking for what we need is in direct conflict with Councilmember Fanny Gonzalez said, when she met with our members seeking our endorsement, she said that she had spent her career ensuring that the council would give MCPS the resources they need. The "we have to be fiscally responsible" argument used by Councilmember Friedson when County Executive Elrich's revenue enhancement measure was first introduced also runs counter to his answer in our questionnaire when he highlighted, "In recognizing the extreme difficulty that our educators are facing, I also voted with all of my colleagues to approve bargain retention bonuses to provide $1,100 for educators." It does not feel good anymore. How can it when the council continues to spend money on new initiatives and yet somehow are audacious enough to say they cannot pay teachers, firefighters, law enforcement, school support personnel, and government workers? You know what new initiatives always require? People to implement them, both recruited and retained. You know what some on the council won't give us? The money needed to do both of those things for our community. Many years ago, before teachers began using Google Docs, we would simply plan the next week's lessons during common planning time. Then administrators began requiring planning shells and now teachers must come prepared to meetings with these shells filled out. So we must meet during our lunch and personal planning time to pre-plan for the planning meeting. For my team that represents seven hours of unpaid time per week during lunch and sacrificing personal planning time, it does not feel good anymore. So after 23 years, I am retiring. I would have worked another year or two, but each year is worse than before. Sadly, every teacher friend who learns that I'm retiring says how lucky I am. I have a brother, Ruben, and two nieces that still teach in the county. Yet I steer people away from the profession for all the reasons stated above. Montgomery County Council, you must make it feel good to be a teacher again. A cop, firefighter, school support worker, county worker, and administrator. Otherwise, more will leave and fewer rejoin. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ralph. Ms. Wolf.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Angela Wolf. And 15 years ago, a parent tried to recruit me to a supervisory position at a semi-private school. And without hesitation, I declined. You see, the fabric of a healthy society has always demanded good public schools for everyone. And after about 30 years teaching in multiple public schools, I have no regrets. But the fabric is weak, the stitches pull taut, to the point of breaking. But y'all have heard all of these heartbreaking stories. Students with serious mental health crises, and my daughter was one. Staff quitting mid-year, bus drivers having to double back for a second or third rounds, principals who check in with students and their families after hours. You know our stories. But most of you seem to be sitting on the proverbial fence. Let me tell you, we have in Montgomery County enough white picket fences for y'all to jump off of and ensure that we have the schools that your kids and our kids deserve. Here are some facts, I think they're fairly correct. Montgomery County residents aged 25 to 44 have a median wage of about $130,000. How many do you do? Anybody? No? Okay. So residents between the ages of 45 and 64, that's me, have wages, a median wage of about $158,000. I know y'all do. How about up here? Anybody else? Nope. So, but here's another fact. Montgomery County has five billionaires and 2,500 millionaires. I have no idea if any of them are teachers, but I could probably make an educated yes. Here's another fact. Montgomery County has 21 large real estate and/or construction companies. Are their interests really with preserving low real estate taxes for immigrants pursuing the American dream? Or the young couple buying their first house? Hmm. I, I really wonder. Look, I'm not hedging my bets. I'm close to retirement. I don't have kids in the schools anymore. I'm in the struggle for our students, your children, and my colleagues. The relatively small increase in property tax is the correct move. Join me. Don't sit on the fence of neutrality. Don't serve the private interests of a few, which I think is what we're doing. As Desmond Tutu said, "If you are neutral in the face of injustice, you side with the oppressor." And here's one more thought that's my own. Let's knock down these white picket fences in the name of anti-racist equitable action. Fund our schools. We can do it. We do have the money.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Mr. Hallums.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Hallums. I'm a sergeant at Montgomery County Department of Corrections Rehabilitation. On April 29th, I'll be celebrating my 21st anniversary with the department. In my 21 years at DLCR, I've had my arm broken, my hand broken. I've had to have stitches over my eye. I also hurt my back. All these incidents that occurred in the jail. I've seen officers assaulted and stabbed, witnessed inmates hanging. As correctional officers, we must endure having feces thrown at us and the constant barrage of racial slurs and insults. It's a mentally and physically taxing job made all the more difficult by forced overtime, long hours, vacancies, and burnout. Right now, we are required to work 16 and a half hour days with seven and a half hours off multiple days in a row. We barely have enough time to sleep a decent night, cook a meal, spend time with family, friends, or work out. There's no time to have a work-life balance. Some of my coworkers have gotten into car accidents on 270 between shifts because they're exhausted and lose focus while driving, endangering themselves and other commuters. A couple of officers have had heart attacks and died because their bodies just cannot stay healthy, kicking up this pace. One officer was laying on his floor. His family thought he was laying on the floor due to normal exhaustion. Sergeant Sanford was deceased. There are too many vacancies in our department and we just can't keep up. Other employers in DC area provide better military credit to new hires and retirement benefits are falling short in Montgomery County. The forced overtime pays well enough, but not if we are so exhausted that we're getting sick or even dying. On top of that, our families don't get our retirement if we die on the job. Recruiting and retaining officers is crucial to changing this dire situation. We need to make Montgomery County an employer that people want to work for again. We've got to improve the funding and benefits so we can get back to that reputation. I urge you to pass the budget improvements and fully fund our contract. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sergeant.
Before I start, I want to introduce my sign language interpreter, Lisa Meston, and my cue speech transliterator, Janet Plante, fellow Montgomery County Public Schools college student.
If you want to hit the button. Very good.
Hello, my name is Vicki Brown. I'm here tonight on behalf of the sign language interpreters, cue speech translators, and our deaf and hard-of-hearing students. I gave testimony before the Board of Education on October 12th, 2022, and on March 28th, 2023, regarding our efforts to be compensated at fair labor market rates by Montgomery County Public Schools. There is a dire need for interpreters and translators in MCPS to fill the needs of our students. The inability to recruit and retain qualified interpreters is the direct result of the low rate of pay. I would like to spotlight the long-term dedicated interpreters that continue to work for MCPS at less than labor market rates. Their experience, institutional knowledge, and commitment to students is unmatched. There are gaps and sometimes full days of instruction that deaf and hard-of-hearing students are in classrooms without interpreters. They are not receiving services legally mandated on their IEP, nor access to a free and appropriate education under the Individuals with Disabilities Act. The recent unanimous Supreme Court decision of Perez versus Sturgis Public Schools highlights this issue. Perez, who is deaf, had his rights violated by the failure to provide him with a qualified sign language interpreter. I encourage you to read the decision. MCPS's inability to retain and recruit interpreters and translators continues. While the vacancies impact us, the greater impact is on our deaf and hard-of-hearing students. Without interpreters, students do not have equal access to education or the opportunity to develop interpersonal relationships. Without interpreters, students do not have access to student engagement through leadership, service, and extracurricular activities. Most importantly, without interpreters, students are denied access to education and communication in their native language, American Sign Language. We are asking the Montgomery County Council to call on MCPS to correct the error by increasing compensation for interpreters and translators. A wage increase would retain our current staff and provide a competitive market to attract interpreters to fill the vacancies. We are also asking the Montgomery County Council to fully fund the county executive's budget. Good for our schools and even better for our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, and thank you to your interpreters. Thank you all for your testimony this evening. The next panel, if Betsy Perry, Kimberly Moore, Joshua Hayes, Mabel Lozano, Laisha Murray, and Chad Wilson, if they can all come down. Okay. We'll begin with Ms. Perry.
Can you hear me?
We hear you well.
Good evening, council members. My name is Betsy Perry and I'm a 29-year veteran. I know it's hard to believe. Teacher, National Board Certified Special Ed Teacher at Harvard Hills Elementary School. It is a community school that is a part of MCPS Award-winning Community Schools. I'm a proud resident of Montgomery County and a parent of children who graduated from MCPS schools. I am a homeschool model teacher and have a caseload approaching 20 students in fourth and fifth grade. I work with mostly small intervention groups for reading and math most of the day. I collaboratively plan for instruction with the two teams for literacy and math. I also support students in crisis as a member of the Crisis Intervention Team, which is deployed multiple times a day now due to a significant rise in challenging behaviors from students. I also perform AM car rider duty and PM walker duty every day. I support students who need social, emotional support, who are struggling with anxiety and are having some difficulty with problem solving. Additionally, I chair IEP meetings and must conduct observations and formal assessments for a growing number of students who are being identified with learning disabilities and challenges. It sounds like a lot. Try doing it in my shoes. Due to the staffing shortage, my caseload has increased exponentially. I must cover other classes at times. And even though special education teachers are allotted days to work on the tremendous amount of IEP paperwork and conduct annual reviews, we don't have enough subs to cover. So I have to do that work on my own. I am not able to take these days to get the enormous amount of paperwork done. I am also very concerned about our safety and the ability to meet the needs of our students who are at a crisis level dealing with a rise in substance abuse, anxiety and depression, social-emotional challenges, and increased and aggressive behaviors. A mom who joined us at the Board of Ed last month to plead for more resources for schools testified again this week that she was begging for more resources because she had just berated her daughter in January. Special schools with discreet programs are beyond capacity, which in turn means that students who require more specialized services and supports are not able to move to these placements. If that sounds like a lot, try doing it in my shoes. What saddens me the most is that I love being a teacher and dreamed of nothing else but that. Since I was a child, I always wanted to be an educator. I could retire in December this year, OMG! But I'm going to try to hang out there for a couple more years. I want our main teaching for a few more years to mentor what we call our Year Zero babies, who are new educators, but it is becoming more and more of a struggle to stay and hang in here because of lack of funding for our Title I schools, lack of support for the challenging paperwork that we have to do. Vice President Friedson, you were in elementary school when I started. I've been around that long. I think, is my time up? Are we at zero? Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. Please, please consider fully funding our budget so that teachers like me, who love what we do and are passionate about our work, can continue to stay and be effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moore.
Good evening, council members. My name is Kimberly Moore. I know that it's late. I keep looking at my clock because I'm a high school teacher and I get to school at 6:30 a.m. And it's hot and you're hot, so please, I hope, take a drink of water. Don't tone me out and really hear what I have to say. I've been teaching in Montgomery County for 17 years. I run out of fingers and toes of all of my family members who have, are continuing to work in Montgomery County, but also have retired school bus drivers, paraeducators, Department of Management. We are a family that is completely invested in Montgomery County. And I say that so that you understand where I'm coming from when I read this today to you this evening. Each day between my teaching of my five classes, I move from reading to meeting. There are IEP meetings, rolling staff professional development meetings, PLC meetings with my content team, and other pop-up meetings that occur. I am hard-pressed to use my contractually mandated planning time, some known as group manage time. Make no mistake, planning time does not really seem like planning time. And this is coming from a high school teacher who gets the assigned planned periods. Teachers are now dealing with increased class coverages due to the shortage of subs. Thus, the time that I'm supposed to have to plan and grade during the workday is delegated to finding time at home, or it's just not getting done. I do not like admiring the problem, but I ask you this. Why do we find ourselves in this situation? Nowadays, teachers rarely reach 30 years because they are so tired and overworked. We have seen members who leave or would rather find part-time work than stay in a system that does not respect them enough to give them sole control over their planning time. We need a system that pays for the highly educated professionals we are. We need a county that tangibly invests in educators and invests in our students that invests in our community. The residents will support a 10-cent revenue enhancement when they see that it means making all of Montgomery County better. The residents will support a 10-cent revenue-making enhancement measure that when they see council members doing their job and helping the residents understand exactly what it will be used for instead of only focusing on running for their next elected position. You will all continue, you all continue to sell the community you represent short the 66% of renters in the county and the thousands of community members who believe in the community at large. Public education is the face of every community in the nation. When the elected officials ignore and deny the needs of the public schools, they are directly affecting the future within their own community. I ask you another question. Is it worth the risk? Is it worth dealing with the consequences generation of our youth who had the opportunity to get the very best but didn't because their leaders of their community failed? As an educator in MCPS who is still investing blood, sweat, and tears into my students and the community, I say no, it's not worth the risk. Invest in me, the educator, invest in my students, the children of Montgomery County, invest in our communities, and invest in the system. invest in our communities, and invest in the system that is the bedrock of Montgomery County, like my family still does. Or we will all remember who chose to invest and who chose not to invest when election comes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Mr. Hayes.
I'm on.
You're on.
It is a pleasure to be here. President Glass, to all the council members, I'm here representing Montgomery College. I'd like to start off by inviting all of you to come stop by the Germantown campus. We'll be happy to actually show you all the benefits of what you guys have done for us so far. So in order to contain my passion, obviously, I've submitted a written statement. I'll just read that. Good evening, as I just said—we'll skip that. Thank you for the honor to speak to you. My name is Joshua Hayes, and I'm a Gaithersburg resident, and I serve as a student senator at Montgomery College Germantown Campus. I'm studying computer science and information systems with plans to transfer to earn a bachelor's degree in computer science. I hope to one day work as an IT professional here in Montgomery County. I'll get right down to it. I want to thank you for helping to save my life. I think I can serve as a linchpin to all of the services that have actually been announced early and their necessity here. Through your support, I was able to pull myself up out of homelessness. During those dark days, I tried my best to sleep right at the Rockville Station. I made this area my home, actually. I spent my days reading in the Rockville Public Library. I just sort of passed the time. I slept during the day on the bus. I walked at night. The library staff there, like the lady mentioned earlier, introduced me to the Crisis Center, which was highly understaffed, as the lady mentioned earlier. They introduced me to Man of Food. Man of Food actually introduced me to Nourish Now and the wider circle, and through that actual circle of network, it was all public-funded, but it was my obligation to sort of find those and seek those out. So they're definitely important to me personally. The Crisis Center actually led me to WorkSource Montgomery, which introduced me to Montgomery College, where I am currently. With access to affordable tuition and quality classrooms and labs, I can pursue my education needs. Thanks to the county's support, I rose from homelessness to a college student, dean's list, by the way. Thank you. I'm now on a career path to thrive, and I'm on track to graduate in May 2024, fingers crossed. I'd like to ask your continued support for Montgomery College. They helped place me and give me all the things that I needed to actually become the best person that I can be sitting in front of you. And please, support the Montgomery College budget request as written. And thank you to all the Montgomery County residents and people that can hear my voice. This county has actually given me a lot to be thankful for. All of the rungs that are housed under Montgomery College has actually supported me and my growth from the outskirts of WorkSource Montgomery into the workforce and development through M C and on to actually being an actual student there and a part of the Senate. So thank you so far for what you've given to us, but please continue to actually do what you do. That's what you support us. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your success story with us.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for sharing your success story with us.
And I really appreciate you walking around. I follow you, and I appreciate you walking around and interviewing the homeless people.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Ms. Lozano.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Mabel Lozano. Vivo en Montgomery Village, y mi petición es más fondos para la organización Sinfines de Logro de Identity. Identity es una institución que ayuda a más de 10,000 jóvenes y sus familias en alta pobreza del condado. Ellos los ayudan a conseguir recursos comunitarios, brindan programas en las escuelas, dan asesoramiento de salud mental y abuso de sustancia. También trabaja para capacitar a los padres, para que participen más en la educación de sus hijos, para que sus hijos sean campeones de su éxito y el éxito de la comunidad. Para mí, esta institución hace un trabajo extraordinario.
Good evening. My name is Mabel Lozano, and I live in Montgomery Village. I am requesting to allocate more funding to nonprofit programs such as Identity. Identity is an organization that helps more than 10,000 youth and their families that live below the poverty line. This organization helps to find community resources, has school programs, and provides help for mental health and substance abuse. They educate parents to be empowered and help their children to be more successful in the community. For this, this organization—for me, this organization does an extraordinary job.
Vine a este país en el 2017. A principio todo estaba bien, pero luego de dos años de estar aquí sin trabajar, mi ánimo y mi autoestima fue disminuyendo. No salía de casa, no conocía a nadie en mi área, ya que toda mi familia vive en New York. Estaba solo con mi hijo mayor y mi esposo. Luego tuve a mi hijo menor, y como no conocía los beneficios que ofrece el condado—beneficios gratuitos que ofrece el condado de grado de niño—tuve que quedarme en casa otra vez porque mi esposo no podía cubrir los gastos de un daycare más los gastos de toda la casa.
I arrived in this country in 2017. I was doing well at the beginning, but after two years living here without working, I started to get depressed. I did not go out of the house, and I did not know anybody around because all my family lives in New York. I was living here with my oldest son and my husband. When I had my youngest son, I was not aware of all the benefits that the county has to offer, so I had to stay home taking care of my son because my husband could not afford to pay for daycare and all the house expenses at the same time.
Pero todo cambió en el 2020 cuando en una reunión en la escuela que mi hijo asistía, conocí a Diana Silva, una joven que trabaja en Identity, y me invitó a un programa de abogacías que ellos hacen, que se llama Padres Latinos Conectados. Eso fue como una inyección de vida para mí. Mi vida dio un cambio radical. Mi ánimo subió un 100% porque en ese programa me enseñaron que a pesar de no saber inglés y de estar en un país que no es el mío, desconocido, yo no estaba sola porque podía contar con ello y puedo contar con ellos. Este programa me motivó tanto que hoy en día trabajo como facilitadora en el mismo programa que trabajé con ellos. Trabajo como facilitadora en case management. Gracias al excelente trabajo que hace esta institución, la población hispana puede salir adelante en este país a pesar de no saber hablar inglés, pero los fondos—necesitamos más fondos porque la población hispana cada día crece más, y los recursos que tenemos no alcanzan para cubrir todas las necesidades que ellos tienen. Gracias.
My life changed in 2020 when I attended a meeting at my oldest son's school, and I met Dania Silva, a young lady that works with Identity. She invited me to an advocacy program called Padres Latinos Conectados. That program completely changed my life. In this program, I learned that despite of living in a new country and not knowing English, I was not alone. They were there for me. This program was so beneficial for me that I am now working as a case manager in the same program that changed my life. Thanks to all the help provided by Identity to the Hispanic community, many people can do well even if they don't speak English. We need more funding for the Hispanic community that is continuously growing. Right now, there is not enough resources to cover all the needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lozano. Ms. Murray.
Hi. Good evening. I'm not gonna say anything about you saying my name wrong. It's okay. Hi, I'm Laisha Murray.
Sorry.
That's okay. I am the proud administrative secretary at Watkins Mill Elementary School, and if any of you know the job that I do, we are the jack-of-all-trades and the master of a few. And I am here to ask the council members to fully support the F Y 24 budget. I am a resident and an employee of M C P S and a proud S E I U Local 500 member. As a county resident, I favor fully funding the budget because it will continue to provide some of the well-needed services for county residents and businesses. Hard-working residents of this county are struggling every day to make ends meet. The county council must acknowledge that to maintain quality education in M C P S, you need high-qualified staff. Currently, however, high-qualified staff live and work in the county, but we are struggling to provide for their families because wages are not keeping up with rising costs. Fully funding the budget with additional revenue enhancements will ensure that M C P S can honor the contracts of the hard-working educators and support staff professionals at M C P S. We know that every child needs and deserves a quality education, but don't forget that none of this would be possible without the hard work and dedication of every worker who does their job tirelessly to ensure that students can succeed. I listen as countless colleagues share their struggles because the cost of living is rising faster than our paychecks can keep up. A fully funded budget ensures that employees of M C P S can continue to live and work in this county and provide for their families. As a homeowner, I know that the projected budget calls for a tax increase. However, the dime spent today will go a long way to ensure a quality education for all students. Attracting the best and the brightest talent among our county workforce will require revenue enhancements and fully funded budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murray. And last testimony on this panel, Mr. Wilson.
Rita Pearson says, "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, understand the power of connections, insist that they become the best they could possibly be. My name is Chad Wilson, and I'm a black male educator at Watkins Mill High School who became an educator to be that champion. When I wake up and go to sleep, I worry about my students and the community. Do they eat? Do they have a place to sleep? Do they have a place to go after school? Do they have what they need to be successful the next day? We are here to answer a fundamental question: What will education in Montgomery County look like going forward? Will the council fund a budget that positively affects the most important resource and gift we have in the county, our kids, or not? When I get to school, my colleagues and I help feed, clothe, mentor, and unlock potential in students to be the best they can be. As one of my students told me today, Mr. Wilson, not only are you my tutor, you create a safe space for me, you're my mentor, and you look out for me. Thank you. But what happens when I'm gone? What happens when I leave? What happens to these students in countless classes from elementary through high school who have no teacher because those jobs remain unfilled? Balancing all these questions and concerns with the pressures of raising our own children, our health, our financial outlook, and a work-life balance of what causes burnout, and trust me, I feel it. The reality is we, as educators, administrators, and support professionals care. Day after day, when over 43% of us cannot even live where we work, we show up and we care. Constantly sacrificing time with our own children, we care. Working multiple jobs, adding a line to our own personal budgets for our students and their needs because we care. When I say budget, I don't just mean money. I mean time and emotional investment. It's time for you, as elected officials, to match our time and emotional investment. The reality is the budget will show the amount of care that the county council has in answering those questions and caring for our children. Reality: There's a national shortage of educators. Reality: More educators leaving their profession because of burnout, realizing they are underpaid and mistreated, and confronted with impossible tasks with limited resources. Reality: M C P S educators make 20% less than similarly credentialed and educated professionals, yet we have educators who use sick days because they cannot afford to put gas in their cars. Reality: There's no education pipeline to replace us, but there are off-ramps for us in Montgomery County. Reality: Since 2019, Frederick County raised their lowest salaries by 12.6% and highest by 6.4%. Howard, 15.9% and 4.3%, respectively us, 3.5% for our lowest, and 0.49% respectively. Reality: The cost of living in Montgomery County is 45% higher than the national average. Reality: When a blueprint is implemented, every county in Maryland has a salary starting at $60,000, why would an educator pick where it's more expensive to live? You all advocated for the blueprint, helped pass it, then ran on that record, so what sense does it make not to do everything to fund it? Reality: Minority educators make 60% of what their degree is worth while also carrying the highest percentage of student loans. Why would I be a math teacher as a black male when I could make twice as much as an engineer? Why would I be a black male technology educator when I could make 2.5% or 2.5 times more going into I T? Without this revenue enhancement measure, we will not be able to make this profession more diverse. I started with a quote, so I'm going to conclude with a quote. "Children should see themselves in the adults in their classroom." That was you, Councilman Alvin Oz. Black and brown students will aspire to be teachers if they see themselves in their educator. That was you, Councilman Fanny Gonzalez. Education is a great equalizer. It's what taught me the value of public service. That was you, Councilman Friedson. Ask yourself what kind of future you want for our schools and community that make the fundamental choice to invest in the future of our children. Match our care.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Thank you all for your testimony this evening. Our final in-person panel—I stress in-person panel—is Emmett Tesler, Noelia Torres, Samantha Okay. Emmett Tesler.
That's gonna be a tough act to follow. Hello, my name is Emmett Tesler. I'm a first-grade transgender educator here at M C P S. I've had the honor of working all three of my years of my career so far at Roscoe Nick's Elementary School, a Title I school here at Silver Spring. My day-to-day as a first-grade teacher is having to constantly adapt on my feet. I start my day bright and early, an hour before my start time, because only then I have uninterrupted time to plan for my students. I cover lunch or recess for my class and sometimes volunteer my time to support students with intense physical needs, sometimes with or without support. I only have time to scarf down my lunch during collaborative planning, where my team fills out endless paperwork and agendas that don't actually help us plan our subjects. I finish out my teaching day and send the kids home, and then stay at least another hour past that to complete all the administrative work, grading, meeting notes, and contacting the families I need to reach out to because I didn't have time during my day. Improving salaries would greatly improve my morale with teachers. During the pandemic, we heard our elected officials commend us and thank us for our dedication. We heard over and over how we are in this together. Did you know that over 90% of teachers spend over $500 a year of their own money on classroom supplies? I personally know many who spend closer to $1,000. I've spent double that in a year alone. On top of that, per pupil funding is lower now than it was 10 years ago. Passing this budget would also help fix the staffing shortage. It would give me and myself and my peers more time to get our jobs done and do less coverage. It would mean I get more sleep and can spend more time with my family and my loved ones. It means I can care for my body by going to the doctors, going to doctor's appointments without the guilt of burdening my already exhausted colleagues who must cover my class and my students in my absence. These past three years have been challenging but very rewarding. I love teaching. I love mentoring and supporting my students. However, this love for this work is dwindling. I see how many of my colleagues have left the county or teaching altogether for better-paying jobs. I see how finding subcoverage is getting harder and harder if I need to go to the doctor. I see how taxing the mental strain is on my colleagues and how it has started to affect me. Even now, I'm in my third year. I cry myself to sleep whether or not to return. I want to, but without drastic change, my mental and physical health will suffer, and it will force me out. And it has—as it has with hundreds of incredible teachers these past years. Increased wages will help, will keep good educators and attract top talent. It will show us that you care about us being able to put food on our families' tables, afford a place to live, and pay our bills, that you care about our well-being so we can care for our students' well-being who aren't here so late. Thank you. That you care in investing into our students who we love and who deserve every opportunity in the world. Do the right thing and stand with the teachers by passing this budget. Prove to us that we are all truly in this together, united for our kids, our community, and our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Emmett. Ms. Torres.
Good evening. My name is Noelia Torres. I just want to say thank you for—I'm so thankful for being here. First of all, this is my first time talking in front of you guys. I've been an employee for M C P S—well, I've been an employee for students under the umbrella of M C P S for the past 24 years. My last seven have been with the program Infant Toddlers for Montgomery County. And as you think about funding and budgets, please, please remember me amongst all the speakers, as fabulous as they have been. And the reason that I am requesting this is because I'm trying to give a voice for people—little people—that don't have one. Infant Toddler Services Infant Toddlers serves children from the ages of birth to the years of three and can extend with us until four prior to entering a pre-K program. We are the foundation of special ed before they enter the school system. And as you have heard many of us mention, the Maryland Blueprint for the Future, pillar one, may I remind you, is early childhood education. It's the foundation of equitable early education opportunities before children enter the school system. And as you have heard, so many are bearing the weight, so many have not been able to employ special ed educators in the school system. We began the school year with over two hundred vacancies for special ed, many of them parent educators. A lot of the schools, probably a lot, probably almost all of them haven't even been able to fill all their vacancies, and we're already going into May. The plan for expansion of programs like Infant Toddlers, we collaborate with the Department of Health and Human Services, with Judy Centers, with Mary Centers, and a multitude of other programs that are funded through the government. We need funding in Infant Toddlers for our support staff. We are also overworked and underpaid, and instead of giving us eight hours of work, they have decreased our hours. We are working seven hours. For a twelve-month year-round program, we are working ten. Every year, we are applying to work our summer hours under temporary pay, TPT. So every year, every summer, we are enrolling or re-registering to be able to work during the summer for those two months. So funding will help fund those hours, funding positions, and also, we are, you know, servicing as interpreters, community interpreters. We are also there for home visits, home therapies, classroom therapies, community. We follow parents in the grocery stores to help them acclimate their children with autism, Down Syndrome, spinal bifida, and the list goes on. And this is what is funneling into the school system. So if you fund us, you'll be getting a head start on what's going to be happening and coming into pre-K and kindergarten as early education. We are asking for funding, also for technology, and support training for support staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Torres. Samantha Ross.
Good evening, President Glass and members of the council. My name is Samantha Ross, and I'm a sophomore at Montgomery Blair High School, and I reside in County Council District Four. I'm here today with all of my fellow students to ask for just one thing. The MCPS budget that my friends that I have labored over, advocated for, adjusted, and improved gets fully funded. We of students have been saying for months that this MCPS budget has the possibility to be a true turning point in student outcomes and student life, but only if it is executed properly. At our current stage, with the budget having gone through months of pre-development and review from stakeholders, board hearings and work sessions being finalized and sent to yourselves, looked at favorably by the county executives, and now on your desks with a vote approaching, we say the way to execute it properly is to approve it and fully fund it. The current components are incredibly important and popular among students. Free AP and IB tests, a bus-tracking app, free dual enrollment and more college and career help, higher salaries for teachers, and routine upgrades to things like infrastructure, lunches, buses, and more. The current components are incredibly important, woo, what's important is that this is non-negotiable. If we want our system to improve, if we want those test scores to go up, we need full funding, not eighty percent, not ninety percent, full. We know that it's not easy, we know that the money is tight, and we know that it is a lot. Well, it's going to take a lot to recover from the pandemic, to continue MCPS's future as a leader in education, and to create the outcomes that we all want to see. Now is the time to show the residents of Montgomery County and the students of MCPS that you care, that you want to improve our outcomes and ensure true equity for everyone in this system. We are here to ensure that there is no more complaining, there is only doing. You can't send out a flight with no engines and then get angry when it doesn't go anywhere. We're here to ask one thing, that the MCPS budget is fully funded for our education, for our brothers and sisters, for the young children just beginning their education, and for those about to graduate. I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration, and I urge you to fully fund MCPS's budget request without conditions.
Thank you, Samantha. Make sure you and all your classmates get home safely tonight. Ms. Cleary.
Is this on?
Yeah, it's on.
I have to follow this?
She's been taught well.
By the way, you do every teacher proud. Hi, my name is Teresa Cleary. I'm a special educator at the Regional Institute for Children and Adolescents and a resident of Montgomery County. I'm here to ask you, like everybody else, to fully fund the budget request to provide adequate funding for our public school system. I've provided a written statement, and I have about fifty copies if anybody else wants one. Copy error. There was, we are living in a mental health crisis in this country. That is just not even up for debate, it's on the front page every day, but there's a special education crisis in Montgomery County, and it requires funding. At RICA, a lack of adequate staffing has resulted in us having to turn down student files for admission. The skeleton crew we operate cannot meet many of the intense behavioral needs issues some of the students exhibits. We have students that have experienced multiple suicide attempts, suicidal ideation, self-harm, physical and sexual abuse, and organic mental health issues such as schizophrenia, bipolar, explosive disorder, personality disorder. If not one of our special schools, these files will likely go to a very expensive outside placement. We need to be staffed based on the needs of students and not a generic state-county staffing number. Federal guidelines suggest that students that in special ed should, they suggest a ratio of one to four. Special schools currently are staffed at one to ten, like every other special education program in the county. This routinely puts students at risk. Special schools are schools, they are not programs. The injuries that the police officer spoke about earlier, I could probably top that. What happens when these students become dysregulated is dangerous. So if we get a file that clearly this is going to need, the student's going to need a one-to-one, we don't have it. And next year, we actually have a staffing cut. Special education teachers at special schools are required to work off the clock due to mandated legal documentation. There's also zero substitute coverage at schools. At my school, small staff, we've covered over six hundred classes for our fellow teachers this year because there is nobody to come and help. It's impossible to complete the work required without the planning time. For many teachers, enough is enough. Related service providers will tell you it's just as bad for them, they are leaving in numbers that scare me for next year.
Ms. Cleary, are you finished?
I can be finished.
If you want to finish up, bring us home.
I would like to, I would just really ask your support. You have heard it all tonight. Nothing has been left out, but it's a crisis, and it needs to be fixed.
Thank you, Ms. Cleary. And closing out this panel, Mr. Frisch.
Good evening, my name is Joe Frisch, I live in Olney. I am asking that Parks Department is fully funded to the requested level. When I first moved to Olney in two thousand and one, Parks was but a small subset of the planning department. There wasn't even a position for the director of Parks at that time. Because of citizens' requests and desire, Parks has slowly gained funding and grown into an award-winning department and is an invaluable part of life for the residents of Montgomery County. Park trails is one of the many benefits with the growth of the Parks Department. Over the years, I've volunteered helping to develop trails throughout the county, both paved natural surface and with a focus on the Upper Rock Creek Trail just to the west of Olney, connects with Rockville and Latinsville, and about a twenty-mile loop. Hikers, runners, and cyclists have always been very excited to find out about it. Usually it is, they know about a little bit of it, and I explain, "Well, do you know the whole loop? No." And give them the information, and they are extremely excited to hear that as well as how many other trails there are in the county and how they all connect together. With this, the trails provide many positive things in unexpected ways. One of the stories, one of the cool stories, there was a middle schooler who grew up riding around, exploring Lake Frank, Lake Needwood. He enjoyed that. As he got older, got into high school, wasn't quite sure what he was going to do with his life, but continued cycling, got into mountain bike racing, but found that he really enjoyed looking back at his time around Lake Frank and Lake Needwood, helping people. So he got involved in volunteering with the races, and along the way, he got his wilderness EMT training, which he very much enjoyed, which led to a job in nursing. While this story relates to trails, we know there are similar stories related to nature centers, ball fields, and other park department programs and amenities. But without full funding for parks, these opportunities to provide growth for people will dwindle. This is why I ask for the Parks Department is fully funded to the requested level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Thank you all for testifying in person. We now have seven people who'll be joining us virtually. You're all welcome to stay. But first, we're going to go to Sora Edwards-Fro.
Good evening, my name is Sora Edwards-Fro, and I'm here representing the Silver Spring Justice Coalition. We have five demands. One, increase MCOT capacity to one hundred thirty-eight dispatches a day. SSJC has been pushing for civilian crisis response since our founding after the police murder of Robert White five years ago. Last year, over half of reported police uses of force involved mental or behavioral health and police targeted black people, four times more than white people. The violence has to stop. MCOTs should go out for all mental and behavioral health situations, including the many that currently go unidentified due to a narrow view of when community members could benefit from care, not cops. Invest to attract and keep a diverse HHS staff. We also urge you to recommend that the executive revisit the makeup of MCOT teams. Other programs, for example, send out medics alongside peers. The county can also set MCOTs up for success with specially-equipped vans and public help campaigns to promote use of these resources. Second, we reject increased police presence in our communities and schools. MCPD's Community Resources Bureau wants to almost triple its outreach events. We note the Bureau also aims to reduce use of force by eight point three percent. Why not just focus on eliminating use of force? A youth basketball tournament is not going to be the thing that convinces anyone who's been harmed by the police that they can trust MCPD. Alongside student advocates, we continue to oppose the Bureau's CEO 2.0 program. Last year, being black or disabled doubled your risk of being arrested as an MCPS student. Instead, as our third demand, we call for robust restorative justice programming in our schools. Yes, these programs have been slow to get off the ground. To accelerate implementation, MCPS should be able to hire some dedicated school-based staff, and we continue to demand that the council expand the wellness centers to the middle schools. Demand four, to fight crime, fund social services. Evidence that police prevent crime is inconclusive at best. Instead, the county should invest in proven anti-crime measures such as after-school programming, summer jobs, the street outreach network, and meeting people's basic needs, all of which get at the root causes of crime. We all want community safety, we believe it can best be achieved by investing in our communities. Finally, we object to items that perpetuate police militarization like precision rifles and drones. SSJC remembers the police snipers stationed on the roof by Veterans Plaza at our earliest protests. We note that although the department is not adding many new positions this year, they are throwing money at the existing ones. The patrol budget alone has gone up by nine million dollars despite decreasing by a handful of officers. We urge the council to consider whether expensive police patrolling our communities with new weapons is the best use of taxpayer funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Sora, for your testimony. And next is Teresa McMillan.
Good evening, my name is Teresa McMillan, and I have been an employee with the Montgomery County Emergency Communication Center for seventeen years. Currently, we have more than sixty vacancies with two more people who just resigned in the last three weeks. As you know, this is a twenty-four-hour center, so our days are incredibly long, especially since we are so short-staffed. We are often held mandatory, which leaves little time for family during the work week. We are public safety professionals. We talk to people who are having their worst day. We talk people through CPR, suicide, domestic violence, just to name a few. We have to make quick decisions and be empathetic at all times. It's time, excuse me, it's very nerve-wracking, and it takes a huge toll on us mentally and physically. We need to improve recruitment and retention in our public safety agencies, especially in ACC. People's lives depend on it.
So can you hear me?
We can hear you, you just stopped for a few seconds.
Oh, okay. I was just wrapping it up and saying we did need to improve recruitment and retention in our public safety agencies, especially in VCC. People's lives depend on it.
Thank you very much for your testimony this evening. Next is Phoebe Hernandez.
Good evening, councilmembers, my name is Phoebe Hernandez, and I live in District Four. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to share what I think are the needs in the community, and I hope you take my testimony into account during the budget deliberations. There are two areas that should be a priority: pedestrian safety and programs and services for special education in and out of school system.
In the intersection of Penny Branch Road and Garland Avenue, we need a light for pedestrians. I see the need to have a light in this specific spot. I hope you can allocate some of the funds to put in this light at this specific intersection.
My second point refers to increasing the budget to offer more services for children with special needs. I would like those funds to be distributed for the middle schools and programs outside of the schools. I see that there is an increasing need, and I would like for those services to be offered in different languages.
I have a child that has dyslexia, and it has been very difficult and frustrating to help him. As a mother, I need more of those resources to be offered in Spanish because those services are usually offered in English.
This could be a good solution for children with special needs so that they feel
This could be a good solution for children with special needs so that they feel accepted and supported, and so that this could be a good solution for them. And they can become great professionals in the future. Thank you very much, and I hope you take into account my suggestions. Many blessings to all of you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hernandez. We appreciate your testimony. Next is Janice Campbell.
Hi. Good evening, County Council members. My name is Janice Campbell, and I'm one of the co-presidents of the Montgomery County School Psychologists Association. I serve Montgomery Blair High School and the Down County Transitions Programs. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to address you tonight. I am speaking in support of the 10 cent revenue adjustment to fund MCPS. There is a critical shortage of school psychologists nationwide, which requires districts to offer competitive salaries to attract school psychologists. In comparison to our surrounding districts, MCPS is simply not competitive and pays up to 24% less than our neighbors. Potential new hires, as well as past employees, have accepted these more lucrative financial offers. This has placed us in the position of struggling to recruit and retain psychologists, and we currently have over 30 positions unfilled, which is equivalent to approximately 20% of our staff. As cited in chatmeet in November 2022, among the largest school districts across the country, MCPS had the largest negative impact with a 33% loss of school psychologists between fall 2019 and fall 2022. Correlating with the highest salaries in other districts, per an interim report in June 2020 from MSD, MCPS ranks 21st out of 24 Maryland school districts with regard to school psychologist-to-student ratio, with a ratio of approximately 1 to 1700. The recommended ratio from the National Association of School Psychologists is 1 to 500. For me, my ratio is over 1 to 2,500 students. These vacancies and high ratios have an adverse impact on our abilities to serve the needs of our students. Our school psychologists are passionate and committed to serving the needs of the students. However, with our current ratios, our focus is primarily on our federally and state-mandated tasks, and we are simply unable to meet the diverse needs of our student population. We need more funding in order to hire more staff. As the more psychologists we have, the more we can do to meet our students' needs. We need to pay competitive salaries in order to attract new school psychologists and to retain the ones we currently have. I urge you to vote in favor of adequately funding our schools so we can ameliorate the significant staffing crisis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell, for your testimony. Next is Valerie Whitby, who is not online. Next is Leiza Jamia. We cannot hear you.
Hello? My name is Leiza Jamia. Hi, I'm Leiza Jamia, and I work at Seneca Creek Community Church as a diaper program coordinator. I'm here today to ask for an increase in funding for programs such as this. Ever since COVID, we have seen an increase in the need for access to affordable diapers in the community. Based on Montgomery County's deficiency standard for a family of four, $1,500,000 would be needed annually, which is four times the federal poverty level. Diapers, which cost nearly $100 per child per month, can be a serious burden to low-income families. The National Diaper Bank reports that children require at least 200 diaper changes a month. With the help of various private donors and DC Diaper Bank, my community program has been able to serve families in the Gatorsburg area. However, these generous donations are not enough. We only have the capacity to meet the need of half of those in our caseload of 1,000 families. As you know, when we are worried about food, clothing, and shelter, we cannot excel in key areas of our lives. In this case, these moms cannot excel as they desire or could potentially dream of due to the added stress of not being able to meet their child's needs. With the $7,500,000 given to nonprofit and faith-based, community-based providers, we've been able to help some families. I would specifically like to ask you to consider adding an increase towards programs such as this to help us meet the gap between what is currently available and the clients in need. As these community-based providers would greatly benefit from new resources to counter the declining donation due to inflation and other recent economic events. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for joining us this evening and for your testimony. And the final testimony we'll receive this evening is from Michael Larkin.
Good evening. Thank you for your time, members of the County Council, and I especially appreciate the opportunity to speak virtually due to some scheduling conflicts on my part. Going last has given me the opportunity to hear all the arguments put forward by my fellow community members about what they think should be in the budget. I definitely couldn't help but be touched by the testimony I heard from Joshua Hayes of Montgomery College and Kathleen Wee, one of our public librarians, and I definitely second all of their sentiments. Unfortunately, I think we also know that people, for various reasons, won't be able to offer their perspective to you tonight. And unfortunately, sometimes those perspectives represent responsibilities that could be tempting to cut. And I use the word responsibilities on purpose here because there are many responsibilities our county has to meet. I want to focus on two in particular for the sake of time, food security, and housing. I definitely support the full funding of the service consolidation hubs. I think, the council, you have heard the evidence of their effectiveness, and they definitely deserve our funding to continue. They were a lifeline. And considering all of the remarkable comments I've heard in regards to education tonight, I think we know those consolidation hubs support many families, families with children, children that are attending public schools. I also want to add my name and support along with other food security advocates, such organizations such as the Montgomery County Food Council, for the full funding of the Office of Food Systems Resilience. Typically, I would be suspicious of another administrative department, but this department is dedicated to getting this county to come up with plans and strategies to make sure that we go from food security to food sovereignty. Also, I and many members of this council were at the pit count, point-in-time count this past winter, counting homeless people. And I think I learned that night that homelessness is a housing crisis. Councilmember Glass, you mentioned during that night that that would be a powerful evening and will leave its mark. It definitely left its mark on me. And I think because of the mark it left on me, I was surprised by the funding recommendation that's in the budget for rapid rehousing, where it currently is could mean a reduction in programming. Rapid rehousing is a program that works. Unfortunately, due to housing costs in this county, I think we know that to cut that program or not to give it the funding it needs would only exasperate the crisis. In conclusion, I just want to state that our budget is not only an altruism, it is an exercise in meeting our governing responsibilities, responsibilities for the well-being of all people in our county. Thank you for your time tonight, and you all deserve a reward for patience.
Well, thank you, Mr. Larkin. I think it's air-conditioned where you are, less so here at the council building being after-hours, but you summed it up perfectly well when you said that this is an incredibly important responsibility that we all have. We have now concluded four different sessions of public testimony, hearing more than 150 of our residents, hard-working employees, and neighbors. And over the next few weeks, we will do our due diligence to make sure that our residents are healthy, housed, educated, and that our workforce is taken care of. And so with that, this concludes today's public testimony. Thank you very much.